Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight on Zoom for tonight's planning commission meeting. As always, we'll start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance. I'll ask that everyone rise, place your hand in your heart, face the flag and follow with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Heschler?
He's muted, but he is here.
Yep. Commissioner Magai?
Uh, present.
Commissioner Keldorf?
Here.
Vice Chair Newman?
She's here.
Chair Baldino?
Here.
Got a quorum?
And, and yes, Commissioner Heschler's here.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Jay. Um, now it's time for public communications. This is normally reserved for anyone wishing to address the planning commission on items not on the agenda. By a show of hands on Zoom, can you let us know if you would like to address something in general not on the agenda during public communications? Okay, seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close public communications. Oh, we do have a hand up.
Uh, yeah, my name's Paul Morrison. I live across from the Aloft Hotel. And on Sunday, they were trimming trees and using a wood chipper. And I asked the police to come out and they said, um, that it wasn't considered construction equipment and they couldn't shut them down. And I just wondered if you'd like to revisit that, having a wood chipper go off on a Sunday morning is a little annoying.
Well, thank you, sir, we appreciate your comment. Um, I don't know, Mr. Allen, if you know if there's any restrictions on wood chippers on Sunday morning? I know we have restrictions, restrictions on construction on Sunday due to noise and dust and disturbances. Uh, but a wood chipper in the street, do you know?
There, there are noise regulations. I'll have to follow up and, uh, get, get the actual codes specific, uh, section that are related to the noise disturbance and nuisance abatement of that. But there are similar timeframes, uh, specific to landscaping. I hope it probably doesn't specify wood chippers, uh, but there, there is certainly noise limitations and hours. So we, we can look into that and follow up and, uh, if, uh, the speaker can, can reach out to staff or if we can get his, his contact information and then we can follow up with him about the particular location at Aloft.
Sure.
If it was the hotel, it's easy.
If you want to give them.
And chainsaws. And they said that chainsaws weren't considered construction equipment.
Yeah, Mr. Morrison, we have your contact info, so, uh, yeah, someone from planning staff will follow up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morrison. Uh, anyone else on Zoom wishing to make a general comment to planning commission during public communications? Can we go back to the, there you go, the Brady Bunch screen? All right, seeing no one raise their hands, let's go ahead and close public communications. Next is written communications. Um, Eduardo, can you tell me what written communications we have?
Sure thing, Mr. Chair. So we, we received a total of eight, uh, lay correspondences. Those have been distributed to the planning commission as well as posted on the city's website. Um, of those eight, uh, five are in regards to item number four, which is the Pacific Coast Commons Project. Um, there are three, um, loosely, uh, associated with the standard works project. Um, with, uh, oh, I'm sorry, let me flip that around. One related to the standard, which is item number three. And then there are, uh, two, uh, late correspondences that address both items. Um, and then, oh, and I'll also note, there are two that have requested to be, uh, read into the record, one on each of the items.
Okay, um, I'm going to take five minutes and review these since they were sent to my planning commissioner email. And, uh, so bear with me one moment while I read these. I'm almost done. All right, I want to thank everybody for sending your comments in writing. Um, they will be part of the record and they will be considered by the planning commission. Um, and next on the agenda is our consent calendar. And what we have in the consent calendar is just the authorization to continue teleconferencing pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. Uh, and then approval of planning commission meeting minutes from September 30th, October 18th, November 18th, and December 13th. Does anyone have any items on the consent calendar they want to pull or discuss?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Uh, is that you, Jay?
Uh, it's Joaquin, right over here in.
Oh.
In the flesh. Uh, if, um, the commission would consider as part of the motion for approval, some tweaks to the AB 361 resolution to add language in section two that would clarify the ability of planning commissioners to attend in person as well as staff. And then also just updating the, um, the date and executive order number that are, um, mentioned in section two. That'd be my request, thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with agenda item F1 modified as directed by council. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Baldino?
Aye.
Vice Chair Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Keldorf?
Yes.
Commissioner Heschler?
Yes.
And Commissioner Magai?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Venus. Uh, that brings us to continued business. Our first hearing tonight is the proposed Smoky Hollow Specific Plan Amendment, Tier Two Community Benefits Plan, Site Plan Review, Master Sign Program, and Offsite Parking Covenant, Construction of substantial additions to existing buildings at 1475 East El Segundo Boulevard and 1320 through 1333 East Franklin Street. And do we have a staff report for this matter?
Yes, we do, uh, Chair Baldino, yes, just to kind of introduce the, the item and our, uh, project manager on this. Uh, our project manager is, is Brad Meisner. He's, uh, he's a contract staff, uh, in, uh, person who has assisted us in the, uh, processing of this application and has met with the applicants numerous times to ensure that, you know, we get to this point in, in the project. Um, before I hand it off to him though, uh, you know, just to, you know, make a couple of points, this project includes amending the Smoky Hollow Specific Plan, uh, for a particular sub area within the Smoky Hollow area, which would then afford the, the applicant to, to construct, um, uh, their, their additions. Uh, as part of that, there's also some community benefits, uh, plan, uh, and agreements that, uh, the, the applicant has agreed to provide, and that is also up for consideration. So aside from that, I'll go ahead and hand that over to, to, uh, Mr. Meisner, who will go ahead and, uh, give you a presentation on the project and, um, um, and ultimately a recommendation.
Okay, before you do that, let me disclose that I met with Mr. Mark Teles, who is the applicant and his architect on June 22nd, 2021. Uh, he had questions about what was taking the process so long with city. And I think the fact that seven months later we're here shows that meeting with me has absolutely no benefit. Um, but we did have a meeting and I did talk to staff about this project and, uh, now we're here. Okay, and with that, let's have the staff report, please.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. Sean Born, thank you for the introduction. Uh, good evening, Chair Baldino, Vice Chair Newman, and fellow commissioners. Uh, my name is Brad Meisner and I am the contract planner that is, um, assisting the city on the processing of this application. Uh, so Eduardo, did you want me to go ahead and share my screen on the presentation or is that already up?
Uh, no, you can go ahead and do that, please.
Okay, sure. Okay, I'm hoping that can be seen?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you very good, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Again, yes, so my, my name is Brad Meisner. Tonight, we're here to speak about the Standard Works Pro- Project. And to be clear, the Standard Works Project encompasses two separate, uh, projects. And so, uh, but they were all considered together with their environmental review. In terms of the overview for what we're going to discuss here this evening, um, first we'll talk a little bit about the Smoky Hollow Specific Plan. I'll talk to you about, uh, what we're calling both the North Site and the South Site. So the North Site is the, uh, 13, uh, 20 through 1330 Franklin Avenue. And the South Site is 1457 East El Segundo Boulevard. We'll talk a little bit about the community, the community benefits plan that Mr. Sean Born referred to. We'll talk about the entitlements that are needed for each project as well as the specific plan amendment. Uh, before you, and if you can just, uh, one moment, um, the first slide, I apologize, one moment, please. Okay. So the fir- first slide in front of you is the Smoky Hollow, Smoky Hollow Specific Plan, um, boundaries as well as the zoning districts. So you can see it's generally bounded by, uh, Main Street on the, uh, West, all the way out to Pacific Coast Highway on the East, El Segundo Boulevard on the South, and then portions of Grand on the North as well as Franklin Avenue on, on the, the North. It's essentially broken into about four specific planning zoning districts. The Smoky Hollow West, the Smoky Hollow East, and then public, sorry, uh, public facility as well as parking districts. Here's an aerial image of the same area. And what you can see in this image here is a red box that indicates the area in which the two projects, um, are located. The N indicating where the North Site is along Franklin Avenue. And the South, uh, is on the corner there of Kansas Street and East El Segundo Boulevard. The Smoky Hollow Specific Plan, uh, as, as you probably know, was originally adopted back in 1986 with the intent of preserving, uh, smaller businesses, the manufacturing nature of what was happening in the area. Uh, the city started to see a lot of market attraction in that area as creative office space and, and areas that were sort of had, had a unique character. Uh, a, a lot of, uh, act, um, development activities started to occur. In 2018, uh, an updated specific plan was adopted with the intent of really trying to preserve the character of the area, but also with a, uh, an eye towards the creation of jobs or innovation to allow for creative office space, all the while preserving, uh, the character of the area and allowing for that mix of sort of, uh, manufacturing and creative office space and with a connection to the downtown. Uh, the first project I want to talk a little bit about is the North Site. Again, is at 1320 through 1330 East Franklin Avenue. It's within the Smoky Hollow East zoning district. Uh, essentially, this project involves about a 44,000 square foot addition on top of the existing brick building there. The brick building that is there is, uh, about 19,000 square feet. So all told, a little over, uh, 65,000 square feet for that particular structure that's proposed. It would be three stories and would be upwards, uh, to 59 feet, six inches. Uh, and the height is the subject of the specific plan amendment that we'll talk about, um, further on this evening. Uh, this particular, uh, development, again, on the north side, uh, along Franklin Avenue is on the same parcel as 140 Oregon Street. And many people will see that project. It's currently under construction now, right there at the corner of Oregon and Franklin, uh, Franklin Avenue. Pursuant to the Smoky Hollow Specific Plan, uh, given that this particular project, uh, would be going, uh, above, uh, the height district that's established in the zoning dis- uh, within this specific plan, excuse me. A community benefits plan is expected and we'll talk in depth about that in a moment. As part of their plan, they are also including a separate kiosk, cafe kiosk building of about a little over 700 square feet. And there would be an outdoor plaza and cafe kiosk, uh, that's all part of that, uh, portion of the development. This is a rendering as would be seen from Franklin Avenue looking towards the, that would be towards the South. So, uh, as you can see, this particular, uh, proposed design has the two stories that would be set atop the existing brick building. Uh, the building itself, uh, as you can see, is, um, designed with very large window openings indicative of sort of that manufacturing or sort of, uh, industrial feel. It has sort of that V-shaped column, the large overhangs indicative of just, uh, a, a much more modern type of architecture, but trying to speak to the vernacular of the area, uh, in terms of the industrial feel. Um, off to the right, you can see just barely a little bit of the, uh, kiosk building that would be for a cafe. And then, um, down the side, and we'll, we'll see some images of it later, down the west side is a, a pass, passageway to the open spaces proposed, which would be on private land but would be publicly accessible to, to the public. Um, a few more, uh, comments about the building itself. As you can see, the ground floor, uh, would be adorned with new lighting, uh, lighting fixtures. Uh, the window openings, um, would give it a, a great pedestrian orientation. Uh, also, uh, there are some overhead power lines, I'm just kidding, um, utility lines that would be removed to kind of help clean up that public realm and that aesthetic there as well. Uh, this is an aerial, you can see the boundaries of what we're calling the North Site, which includes the property there at the corner. We talked about 140 Oregon that's currently under construction at Oregon and Franklin. Uh, the white, uh, square that I'm showing here with my cursor, I don't know if you can see it, at 66,431, that's where the proposed building is. Directly behind that building is the, uh, existing parking garage. And we'll talk about that later. There are 398 parking spaces in there. And those parking spaces would be for, uh, both 140 Oregon as well as 1320, 1330 East Franklin. And later on, we'll talk about some of the shared parking that, uh, would be part of the 1475 East, uh, East El Segundo Boulevard project as well. Uh, in terms of, uh, one of the predominant, uh, community benefits that's being proposed as part of this project, again, is the, uh, open space on site. It's to the west of that particular building. Uh, you can see it here, it's essentially a, uh, a landscaped, uh, urban plaza, if you will. Um, what I think is sort of unique about it is that in between where the kiosk is, where the cafe kiosk in the edge of the building is, uh, this connect, connection, uh, to the sidewalk. And it kind of functions somewhat like a Mew that you might see, you know, like in Europe. It's sort of a, uh, an interesting way that people might want to turn the corner and walk backwards along, uh, walk to the back of the property along the side where this, uh, open space would be located. And again, that's publicly accessible. Uh, in terms of the South Project, at 1475 East El Segundo Boulevard, uh, similarly to the North Site, uh, there's an existing brick building there. Uh, a, a similar scaled addition is proposed with retention of the existing brick building. Uh, in terms of its context, directly across East El Segundo Boulevard to the south is the, is the Chevron Refinery. And, uh, directly to the west, its neighbor is the Beyond Meat, um, headquarters. Uh, it too also needs a community benefits plan. It's a little bit different here. The FAR for this particular site would exceed the baseline standard in the Smoky Hollow Specific Plan, which is 1.0. Uh, their floor area ratio would be upwards of 1.45, which then requires that they, uh, have to process a, a, a Tier Two Community Benefits Plan. Um, a couple of notable features for this particular project is that they have provided some pocket open space along, uh, Kansas Avenue. Uh, there would be some outdoor seating there for the public along that side and some landscaping that would soften sort of that, that urban edge there, as well as there would be stacked parking on site in the form of some parking lifts. Uh, and then also, as I alluded to earlier, there would be, um, a parking covenant uh, to allow for shared parking for, uh, the requisite parking for this particular project within the parking garage. It's on the North Site. Again, here's an aerial, uh, image showing, uh, where that lot is at the corner of Kansas Street and East El Segundo Boulevard. Uh, the lot area itself is about 43, uh, 44,000 square feet. And so that building essentially would be just about, uh, 66,000 square feet there as well. Uh, in terms of its architecture, um, uh, somewhat similar in terms of a look and feel, although I think this, uh, particular project, um, has the ground level pedestrian orientation, just as the other did. There'd also be, um, some overhead utility lines that would be, be removed as part of this project. Um, as you can see, you have sort of this large frame around, uh, the front, sort of a, a catwalk balcony. Uh, is sort of one of its predominant features. You have, um, a, a, a change in plane and materials. Uh, I think the execution i- is, um, quite striking in terms of its architecture. Again, trying to play off of the existing character of the building that is there as well as trying to be sensitive to, um, the look and feel of the Smoky Hollow, uh, Specific Plan. Also stepping away from the Beyond Meat. And so you have a driveway here along the west side, uh, in that large frame. That's certainly an architectural feature as part of that project. Um, in terms of the community, uh, benefits plan as part of the Smoky Hollow Specific Plan, essentially what is needed is whenever a project deviates from the baseline conditions, and that could be either height or FAR, then a community benefits plan is expected. There are five, uh, categories indicated in the specific plan as a matter of policy that are understood to be community benefits. And those areas are, uh, building character, open space and landscaping, um, providing connectivity, um, providing signage and public art, and also looking at the public realm. So any project that is needing to adhere to a community benefits plan is expected to have building elements and characteristics of the project in these five categories. For the two projects we're talking about, um, essentially there are 32 guidelines, uh, design guidelines within the specific plan that are in those five categories. Each of the projects has utilized upwards of 28 of the 32 design guidelines. Uh, there is an expectation, uh, that sort of the minimum number of standards that any project would need to achieve is around 17. So they are exceeding, uh, the number of standards that they need to. But, uh, um, many of those standards, as we, as we kind of looked at, there's a large emphasis on the actual building character, upgraded architecture. Uh, but both sites, um, are improving the public realm. We, we talked a little bit about, uh, the public, uh, utility lines at the frontage on each project that would be undergrounded. And so that is, uh, one way in which they're achieving some community bene- benefits there. Uh, again, the North Site is providing that cafe kiosk to promote, um, activity along the street frontage and also to provide some synergy between the kiosk and the private open sp- or sorry, the public open space that is being proposed in that urban plaza. And then on the South Site, again, as I spoke before, there's a, there's sort of a corner pocket open space in those, uh, parking lifts, um, uh, which is a part of a good transportation policy there. Um, also, in terms of the community benefits plan, for the planning commission to be able to consider whether or not they believe the community benefits they believe the community benefits plan is appropriate, there is a finding that is required. You'll find that in the resolutions. And specifically, the finding for the community benefits plan is that the planning commission must find that the value of the proposed community benefits bear a relationship to the value generated by the project. And simply what this means is essentially, when you take a look at the delta and the difference between a baseline condition of what a project could do by right and what the added amount of square footage that's provided when you go above the baseline condition. So in this case, if you go above the one point oh FAR or higher, we, the city retained Cosmont Associates to take a look at the value that would be generated for the project applicant by being allowed to have that added building square footage in height. And then they also look at what would be the value of the community benefits. So what was analyzed for this project is with the enhanced architecture, the undergrounding of the utilities, the open space and some of the other amenities. For the north site, the community benefits package is upwards, or the cost is upwards of four point oh seven million dollars and three point five two million for the south site respectively. Those numbers are above and beyond what is expected in terms of the value that would be gained from the added square footage. And so in staff's opinion, we do believe that that finding can be made, and that's for the commission's consideration. In terms of the entitlement applications that's needed, the particular projects were both analyzed under the California Environmental Quality Act. An initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared. The original EIR that was prepared for the Smoky Hollow specific plan back in, I'm sorry, twenty eighteen, I believe, I'm getting, yeah, twenty eighteen, did look at the environmental impacts of the district as a whole. But under CEQA, you're able to analyze impacts from a project at, when you have much more specifics to determine whether or not there would be any new or unforeseen impacts from the project. So that is what was done here. It was a new analysis based on both of these projects and the merit of their projects. What was found is that there were potential impact areas, but there are mitigation measures that can be provided and will be, would be provided as part of the incorporation of the projects that would mitigate all those potential impacts down to a level of insignificance. And another entitlement that is needed, as I talked about earlier, is a specific plan amendment. The applicant is seeking to allow for a height of up to sixty feet. So that would be ten feet above and beyond what is currently permitted within the Smoky Hollow specific plan. The rationale behind that request is to allow for more flexibility in design, especially particularly what I was understood for these projects is given the fact that the ground floor, brick buildings are being retained. The added height was needed to help with the design flexibility that is sought for these particular projects. As we talked about, each project is required to have a community benefits plan. Each project is required to go through a site plan review to ensure that it meets all the standards of the Smoky Hollow specific plan, as well as the standards of the Elsuganda Municipal Code. And last but not least, also a master sign program is proposed for both, for both buildings. In terms of the initial study mitigated negative declaration, just to give a little more background, again, the EIR for the specific plan was adopted by council back in twenty eighteen. The project was evaluated separately, as I said. They determined that there are mitigation measures that can, that have been identified. And they all become conditions of approval for the project that are required to be implemented. The responsibility of the developer with city oversight and compliance to make sure that all those mitigations and conditions of approval are met. Any previously identified mitigation measures from the EIR are also still relevant, and those will be incorporated as well. In terms of the specific impact areas from these projects, what was discovered were impacts in the areas of biological resources, in the area of geology and soils, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, transportation, hazards and hazardous materials, and tribal cultural resources. We do have a representative from MIG here this evening who helped the city and prepared the mitigated negative declaration. As I indicated, all of those areas that were identified for potential impacts, we've also found mitigation measures that can, that can reduce those impacts. In terms of the specific plan, as I alluded to before, the existing specific plan allows for a height of up to fifty feet to the top of the roof. There is allowance for projections above that height for things like roof parapets, stair enclosures, as well as elevator shafts. So what the proposed amendment would be, would be to allow for a sixty-foot height limit. But instead of just opening that up into the entirety of the Smoky Hollow specific plan, what has been proposed is an actual sub-area within the Smoky Hollow specific plan. I'll show you an image of that. So as you can see in this image here, in this red outlined area, essentially to the east of Center Street, all the way out to PCH with Elsuganda Boulevard on the south and Franklin Avenue in the north. This has been the identified area as what would be known as Sub Area One. This would be the only area where that sixty-foot height limit would apply if the commission were to recommend the specific plan amendment. And the thought being there was that this area in particular starts to head out more towards the PCH corridor, out to some of the taller buildings out that way. It stays away from the residential neighborhood further to the north. And in this particular area, it seems that those, also the Infineon project or building, rather, down on the corner of Elsuganda Boulevard and Spoveta is a bit higher there. So that seemed to be sort of an area where it seemed more likely that some height could be added. In terms of the site plan review for each project, again, as I indicated, each project was evaluated for its compliance with all the standards within the Smoky Hollow specific plan, as well as the municipal code. So that is all your, your development standards such as height and setbacks and parking, all the landscaping, the orientation of the buildings. Also, so that was done for both of those buildings, for both north site and south site. And they were found to be compliant with the standards that are required, notwithstanding the specific plan amendment request. And then also a master sign program is needed for each building. And so what this does is it would encompass both sites. It is intended to essentially set up a sign program for the buildings in terms of the sign, the size, the types of signs, the location, the heights of signage. What it does is it helps for future tenants coming in. They already know where those locations of the signage are. It helps with ensuring that the signage is incorporated into the architecture of the buildings. And so it just maintains the harmony of sort of the architectural look such that each tenant doesn't have to come through and process their own signage. They just know the pre-established locations. And with that, there are a number of recommendations that are before the commission this evening. First and foremost would be to, staff is recommending the adoption of Resolution twenty-nine twelve. That would be to recommend to council the adoption of the initial study mitigated negative declaration. The next action would be adoption of Resolution twenty-nine thirteen, which would be recommending to city council the consideration of a first reading of an ordinance to approve the amendment to the Smoky Hollow specific plan. And that's, that's specific to the, to the height. And then also adopt Resolution twenty-nine fourteen, which would approve the, the south site, yeah, sorry, the south site project, which includes the environmental assessment twelve eighty-one, the community benefits plan nineteen oh two, master sign program twenty-one oh one, and site plan review twenty-one oh three. And then for the north site, similarly, it would be to adopt Resolution twenty-nine fifteen to approve the environmental assessment twelve eighty-two, community benefits plan nineteen oh three, master sign program twenty-one oh one, and site plan review twenty-one oh four. Of course, all of those recommendations are based on all of the findings and conditions that are contained within the staff reports and the resolutions. And with that, that was a bit long-winded, and I apologize, but I'm here to answer any questions. We also, as I said, we have the project applicant, Mark Tellez, as well as his architect, David Ballion on the line to answer any questions, as well as representatives from MIG to answer any questions about the environmental impact and mitigated negative declaration. With that, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for that report. Any questions for staff from the DICE?
I did. I had a quick question about the, the resolutions as you read them. The Resolution two nine one four, was that for the north site?
That is for the south site.
The south site, okay.
Two nine one four is for the south site, and two nine one five is for the...
And the south site is under construction now?
No, I apologize. So the south site is at the corner of East Elsuganda Boulevard in Kansas. So that's not under construction yet.
Okay.
On the north site, the proposed project is located at thirteen twenty, thirteen thirty East Franklin Street. But directly to the west is one forty Oregon on the same property that is under construction.
Okay. The two, the two resolutions, then, they're requesting the, the height addition, yeah?
Yeah. So for both projects, they both are seeking the added height up to fifty-nine feet. And so they are both the subject of the specific plan amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
On one forty Oregon, what is the approved height there?
So for the one forty Oregon project that's currently under construction, my understanding is that is approved up to fifty-five feet in height.
Okay, which then exceeded, right, what the... So I think that came before us, and we gave it five additional feet at some point?
I don't think that came before us.
It did. I do not remember it coming before us, not when I was on the council or commission, rather.
What?
No, the, the then director and then planning manager had gone through a, an adjustment process. They deemed that an adjustment process was, was applicable to it. And the adjustment allows for a ten percent increase in the height. So I think the justification there was that since the, there was a fifty-foot height limit, ten percent adjustment to the height rendered it at fifty-five feet, and that was approved.
So when we redid the Smoky Hollow plan, we had this idea of trying to get developers to give us their ideas within this community benefit framework of, you know, keeping the old brick buildings, architectural, open spaces, things like that. The first building came through over the counter, I understand, and through that new process we adopted was approved. And then we wanted to do this, the same thing for the second building. He couldn't do it.
Because they're going above the ten percent?
I am, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. But that was our meeting. Basically, Mr. Tellez was like, I got one thing approved. I'm building it. I want to do the other one. I'm told I can't. So I think the solution was now we're rezoning that strip between this project and PCH to be a sixty-foot maximum height.
Correct, yeah. Correct, yes, yes. I mean, there were some nuances in terms of, of, of the project and how it morphed over time. But yes, that's ultimately what we landed on.
And the decision for staff to then adjust or amend that entire area is because there are additional projects that you anticipate will have the same request, is there? Has anything else come to staff that we could expect to see in the future?
Well, not, not anything down the pike at the moment. But I think in looking at, at this particular project and, and, and what they were, you know, really trying to achieve architecturally and, and, and just see how it fit in with that area. You know, I think from a staff perspective, instead of just looking at it as one site in, you know, in a vacuum, we decided to look at it and landed on, you know, carving out this sub-area, which we thought that, you know, based on the topography of the area and the built environment, that for that area, and it not being close to any residential, that to allow for some additional height and flexibility was, was appropriate for that area. And as, as Mr. Meiser had indicated in his presentation, you know, looking at, at the built environment and how the, the buildings kind of gradually do increase as you head east towards, towards PCH, it was almost like a transition. And so in order to provide for some additional flexibility, you know, we felt you landed on that area. And of course, that's all subject to a community benefits plan. It's not just, it's not a hard and fast allowance. You know, there is a community benefits, you know, program that, that an applicant such as Mark Tellez or anyone else in the future would have to provide for, to us. And we'd have to look at it on its merits and see if, if what they are proposing is, is sufficient to allow for that. You know, that give and take, if you will.
Would you still then be able to do a ten percent increase over the counter as you had before? Are you proposing that?
No.
So sixty's the maximum?
Correct.
And the applicant's gonna present as well?
Yeah, he'd get the first right during public communications. Jay or, do you guys have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I've got a, just a clarification. In the Cosmont report, it's probably an artifact, but it does say there's a thirty-five-foot limit, and therefore it's asking for a twenty-four-six variance. And I just want to make sure that that is either an old typo or an artifact and not, not part of this plan, because we are talking significantly higher than thirty-five feet.
Correct. So, so currently, at the moment, the, the, the specific plan does allow for a thirty-five-foot height limit. That's, you can do that without any kind of community benefits. It's your, kind of your by right development standard. The specific plan currently allows for increase to that height, depending on what type of deviations are being sought. An applicant may request a, a, a couple of different types of community benefits, uh, community benefits plans. And so depending on what they are trying to achieve, it would be something that would either come before the council or ultimately before the council or something that's done, you know, relatively through, through, at staff or ends at the commission. So that's currently what, the way it's set up. So thirty-five feet is your base, and if you wanted to go up higher, you could. And your max at the moment is fifty feet. So this particular amendment would still establish or keep the thirty-five-foot height limit that, you know, that is currently available throughout the, the, the specific plan area. But like I said, in that sub-area would allow you, through community benefits, to seek sixty feet.
Thank you.
Kevin, you have a question?
Yeah, um, so, so this amendment would apply to just this thirty-acre sub-area, right? So can we, which is larger than the project footprint. Is that correct? Can we just approve it for the specific project footprint and require those within the sub-area to come and get approval for that on a case-by-case basis? Instead of doing the entire sub-area, is my question.
So are you, are you, are you, and I apologize, are you asking whether or not the sub-area boundaries could be changed?
No, he wants...
Could it just be specific to the project footprint?
Or Kevin, are you saying you want to have some type of planning commission review of any project sixty feet in this sub-area?
Or, or over fifty feet in that area?
Yeah, anything that exceeds the current maximum.
Yeah, so, so that, that would not change. I mean, anything above the thirty-five would require community benefits and discretion on part of the city.
Right, but that would go through the counter.
And that would, I'm sorry?
That's over the counter. That's an internal procedure between you and Mr. Allen, analyzing community benefits, approving it, and then it can be constructed. What, what he's asking for is if, if anyone else wants to do sixty feet, we can, we can say, fine, you've got... we can, we can say, "Fine, you've got that right, but we want to see it. We want to have review of it."
Yes, that, that is, that is completely why the, this application is before you too. The, 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 the amendment aside, the, the, um, the, the request to go up to sixty feet includes a community benefits plan, which is reviewed by, by the commission and council.
Okay, so as it's written now, if someone, um, in this sub-zone wants to go to sixty feet, they have to come to planning commission?
Correct.
All right, is that satisfying?
To clarify, because the planning commission would have to approve the community benefits plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and that's, and if I can just add to that, so that, that rubric, that, that decision process in determining that the planning commission and council have to approve community benefits, uh, tier-one projects and c- uh, community ben- benefits, tier-two projects, that's written in the specific plan, uh, in Table four-point-one, four-dash-one of the community benefits plan, that does require a planning commission's approval.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I'm just trying to understand why you would create a sub-area with that, with, with that leniency. Why, why, why would you just sort of, why not just discuss the project before the city now? And why have we created an entire area that's allowable? I mean, what, what, what's the benefit to that?
Well, uh, Brad, if you want to bring up the, the, um, the slide with just the sub-area, um, there, there were a couple reasons. I think, you know, in terms of the, uh, the site or, or that sub-area, um, there's a couple benefits to that, because, you know, it, again, it's, it's...
Benefits to the city?
Well, it, I should say benefits to allowing for that, or, or, you know, justifications, how's that? Justifications to, 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 to that. Um, and it is, you know, to the north, as you can see here, uh, you know, it doesn't, but, it doesn't abut residential. So if you were to apply sixty, you know, the allowance to go up to sixty feet throughout the entire specific plan area, there are many properties to the north of the specific plan that are zone residential or are developed with residential. And to have a sixty-foot-high building is just, you know, I, from a staff perspective, I think is just, you know, you know, pretty, pretty bold and, uh, uh, to allow for that type of height and could produce, you know, produce impacts that, you know, that, to, to residences. So we landed on this area because A, it, you know, it's, it's far away from, from the residential, uh, uses. B, uh, the topography kind of within that area varies, um, you know, throughout that, that site or that, that, that sub-area. And, you know, it almost affords that, you know, some of that flexibility, because, you know, in terms of how you measure height, uh, you know, you measure it, uh, you know, from, from key points on each property, and so because that area tends to have more topographical changes, that, you know, sixty feet, you know, affords, you know, some more flexibility. And then thirdly, I think, you know, some of the existing development patterns that you see out there, um, with, like, Mr. Meiser indicated, you have the Infineon site and you have the, the site next to that, which already, you know, pushing, you know, fifty, sixty feet, um, and, you know, which were allowed at the time.
How tall, how tall is that building? Do you know, Eduardo?
I don't know off, offhand. I think, you know, just kind of, I, you know, windshield survey and eyeballing it, you know, um, I would probably guesstimate it's about, you know, well over fifty, pushing sixty feet probably at the moment.
It is a full-three stories, Edu- uh, uh, Eduardo, yeah.
So, so yeah, so those, those kind of, you know, justifications or that, we felt those were justify, you know, justifiable, uh, reasons to, to just carve out this area instead of having sixty feet be, be applicable to the entire, um, specific plan. And ultimately, yes, it would come before a planning commission and, and council for approval, because there would be discretion. But at the same time, um, you know, I, you know, from a staff perspective, we don't want to kind of, you know, give, give some, us kind of a, a false sense of, of hope to, to applicants when really the main issue, when you're, when you're, uh, uh, abutting residential properties, is the fact that, you know, the potential of having these really tall buildings, and, you know, how do you mitigate that? And, uh, you know, to, to, to put ourselves in that situation, I think, would just be bad, bad, uh, uh, planning. And so that's why we landed on this area.
Well, no one, no one's arguing we should have sixty feet throughout Smoky Hollow. I think the question was, why aren't we just doing a variance for this one project as opposed to making a sub-zone for other properties that aren't asking for this? Is there a, a logic to this? Is there some, some reason behind this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just jump in. I, you know, so I, that's, it's a, it's a decision that, you know, that the applicant had to make, is whether or not they could make the legal findings for a variance. Uh, it's a very different consideration that the planning commission has to make when making the, the findings for a variance. Uh, so the decision was to proceed with, with the amendment to the strategic, or to the specific plan, uh, because the findings were likely easier to be made and justified than that of making the decision for a variance. Or, we don't have a variance in front of us today, and the applicant, the applicant has chosen to pursue this path and present this path, you know, to the planning commission, and so, uh, that, that's the consideration that we're, that we're faced with today.
And we've done this before, Brenda, when we were talking about, um, the properties over by AMC Theater and that, where they were all like, kind of boxes for industrial uses, and we wanted to open them up and have patios and more windows, and so instead of just doing one, we kind of rezoned that whole area to allow more flexibility. So there's, you know, we, we've done this in the past. It's not completely unheard of.
Right. It just sounds like an easier way for the city to, to allow it rather than the variance itself. And, and, yeah, um, what, um, I would just be curious if there was any discussion for anything further than a sixty-foot request? Has that ever been discussed?
I, I'll have to defer to Eduardo on what was previously discussed, um, leading up to this, but I do want to address the first half of your comment, and keep in mind that variances are intended for the anomaly. Variances are intended to allow the development of a, of a property that would not otherwise be permitted if the, the strict im- implementation of the code was, was applied. And they were being denied rights that their neighbor were otherwise being permitted to take advantage of because of the size of their property, the shape of their property, the slope of their property. Uh, and so that doesn't always equally translate to when we're trying to do, you know, good land use planning, we, we need to think on a broad spectrum, and so if somebody comes to us with an idea that, "Look, I, it's, it's, it's marketable, it makes sense to build a little bit higher here, um, this is what we envision," we, we need to take that into consideration, uh, in, in terms of how it impacts the, the community that, that it's within. And so the variance is not the appropriate mechanism in that place, because they're not exploring building higher because they're being denied rights that their neighbor is being allowed to, to take advantage of. They're exploring an idea that has broader implications, and it would otherwise be spot zoning if we said, "Okay, you can do it, and then everybody else has to go through this process every time." Um, we, we don't have a mechanism for that. And so to Eduardo's earlier point, you know, it makes more sense to think from a broader spectrum and, and identify a sub-area where we believe it makes sense and, and inspired by the, the ask of the, the applicant, that we believe that if we're going to explore this, it makes sense in this sub-area to allow up to this height.
The variance would be requested by, for example, Smoky Hollow West. If the, if the sub-area got approved, that's where a variance would be.
If there was a particular property owner, yeah.
What, wh- where this gives me a little bit of heartburn is that it seems like a pretty big area. If you go down El Segundo Boulevard, you know, it goes, goes up and down, and, excuse me. And, and this project, it seems like it's justifiable, because you can see on the, um, on the rendering that there is a slope, and you have to do something about that. But if somebody wants to build a, a taller building at one of the peaks of, you know, El Segundo Boulevard and, and, you know, one of, one of the, the higher elevations, we don't have a way to say, "No, we, you can't build that high because you're on this." It would only be discussing the community benefit portion of it and not the aesthetic or the design piece of it. So to me, it seems like, can we make the area smaller somehow? Um, can we see the topography of this area? Can we pick out a couple of these blocks that we think would be good that are on these slopes, that we need to kind of justify having these taller buildings? Versus, you know, having this, potentially a monstrous structure, a monstrous, it could be the, the same height, but because it's on one of the, the, the peaks of, of that area, it could look monstrous. I, I just think that this is a long stretch of El Segundo Bou- Boulevard with a lot of different topography that things could look a little, um, a little, not conforming.
Right. And, and, and Kevin, to, um, to piggyback on that, I guess to, to talk apples to apples, the Infineon building, yes, it's three stories, but, I mean, really, guys, this is a five-story building. I mean, each one of those three stories has two levels in it. So I think the Infineon, Infineon building, I don't know how tall it is, but it's not, I don't think it's fifty feet. So we are talking about a significant size difference from what is on that stretch already. I don't disagree that, um, some height is more at home next to the taller buildings, uh, across the street. Um, but, I mean, this bigger planning area for sixty feet is suddenly, uh, looking at putting a bunch of battleships in there. So I guess, I guess I'd like to approach that carefully.
Okay, Kevin and Jay, thank you for your comments, but let's get through the, um, public communications, and then we'll have our deliberations, all right? Uh, any other questions for staff before we open up the public communications section? Okay. Now we'll have the, uh, public comment, and as always, the first right will go to the applicant. And who do we have from the applicant with us?
Mark Tellez, how you doing?
Well, how are you, sir?
He's parked in there. Um, my name is Mark. I'm the project engineer and project applicant on the project. I'm excited to get to this point. I've first submitted a couple, been over two years now. I've been quite a process, but we love El Segundo, we love Smoky Hollow. We're excited that we, uh, we're able to keep a large space company in Smoky Hollow with one-forty Oregon, and we know they and other companies are interested in Smoky Hollow as much as we are. We just need some more square footage to get them here and keep them here. Um, one, only one important item that I wanted to note, uh, before I let David, our architect, kind of do a quick overview of the project, is that the request for height is hinged solely on our desire, and we think the city's desire, to keep the old nineteen fifty-four red brick buildings. Uh, very simply, if we didn't want to keep those buildings, we could have knocked them down, been below fifty feet, and achieved a higher FAR. Um, we're not just greedy real estate developers. The truth is, even with the height and developing all the projects, once we're done with the thirteen-thirty East Franklin and the fourteen-seventy-five East El Segundo, in conjunction with the parking garage, thirteen-oh-one East El Segundo that was done in two thousand seventeen, and one-forty Oregon that's being completed now, our total FAR for the entire site is only zero-point-nine-four, so below the by right FAR. But we do acknowledge, because of the topography of the area and our desire, and again, we believe the Smoky Hollow specific plan's objective of keep, keeping and harnessing the old beauty that we have in the area, we're left with the, we have only so much footprint and a certain finish grade, and the only way to get any FAR is to go up. So we wished we, quite frankly, we wished, we didn't need to go higher, but, um, it's, uh, necessary. Um, one quick comment, we, we, David Ballion and I, we were around when the Smoky Hollow specific plan was kind of first initiated in two thousand fifteen and sixteen. In fact, we were getting ready to submit these projects under the original Smokey, or the previous Smoky Hollow specific plan, where you would get, um, additional height by doing a lot tie. Um, we waited, we got the new Smoky Hollow plan, and, um, one comment within the plan, or at least the, the theory of the plan from our perspective and the original submittal, was that any height could be asked for if the community benefits were cor- corresponded with the height. Um, I think that the interpretation of the plan has changed a little bit, and we totally get it, we're, we're all for it. But, uh, I, I think it's necessary to understand that and why we're asking for the additional height. Thank you. We look forward to building the thing.
Thank you, Mr. Tellez.
Good evening, folks. I guess I'll, I'll just take, um, my name is David Ballion, and I'm representing the design team. If I may share my screen for just one moment, um, I'd like to, um, answer one quick question, or, uh, provide a little bit more context of the height. Uh, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to share my screen. Give me just one second. Um, from an architect's perspective, um, I do think it's worth noting how height is measured to understand why the additional flexibility, um, makes sense. And, okay, let me try this again, excuse me. Um, one second, I really apologize. Oh, never mind, I'm not able to share my screen, but, um, uh, there, so the way that height is measured is you take the topography of your property underneath the building, and you take an average of the four corners. And what that does is the zero plane, um, depending on the site, could be below ground or it could be above ground, just depending on your topography. Um, the rendering I was trying to show you, and I'm sorry, my, my, uh, my, uh, my computer won't allow Zoom to share my screen unless I restart it. I don't want to do that. But if you look at the rendering of the south parcel, for example, the existing floor plate of the building, the fir- the, the one-story building that we're trying to retain is seven and a half feet above the street. So, um, of course, the biggest desire, or one of the big desires of the, um, specific plan is to retain the characters of these buildings and, uh, to retain the buildings. And, um, what I think, um, is key here to understand why the additional height makes sense is because this area, this entire area is so, uh, topographic. Um, and every single project has to do this calculation, and you, one project could be significantly different from the one next door in terms of height, because these original buildings were all built at dock height. Um, if you go around, uh, the area and you look at all these buildings, some are at three and a half inch, or sorry, three and a half feet or so. Some, like our building, is seven and a half feet above the corner. So, um, our project here is really the same project as one-forty Oregon. It's really the same, but because of the existing conditions of the building that's already there and the topography, this site takes a penalty. And so, understanding the market and, um, creative uses, such as all the really amazing companies that exist in this area, you know, you need to provide them with, um, um, you know, taller floor-to floors for their R and D and their equipment, et cetera, et cetera, as we're learning, um, quite a bit now. And so, um, two sites next to each other, because of the topography and because of the existing conditions of these buildings we're trying to retain, could have two different heights. And this additional flexibility in this area just makes it more accommodating and easy to do your typical eighteen-foot floors and not have one site, be, based on what I just mentioned, pay a penalty. So, um, I ju- I, I do think that's important to acknowledge, because you need to understand how height is measured, um, and acknowledge that, uh, the big point of the specific plan is to retain these buildings and not have to pay a penalty in height, because otherwise you could only do a two-story building because your dock height of the existing is, you know, eight feet or so up in the air, unless you demolish the building. So if you demolish the building, then your whole, then our building wouldn't need to be taller. Um, we could do the three stories as proposed, just, you know, um, coming from grave. So it's a little bit more nuanced, and, um, having studied so many of these sites in these areas, I did, I wanted to share that perspective. Um, uh, I, I don't want to take too much of your time, but I do want to mention two other things. Um, I do really feel it's, um, sort of worth celebrating in your consideration that the, um, the amount of design work and, um, effort the owner is allowing us to perform on these sites. Um, you know, having this exposed steel, um, inspired directly by the specific plan and the oil, you know, rich oil industrial history of the area, um, as well as the mid-century, these, these original first four, uh, first-story buildings or one-story buildings were designed in the mid-century era, and they have that little flair. And we also took cues from that mid-century area and the block, um, and the blockwork with the stacked bond pattern and the strike joints and the color integral grout. Um, I do want to mention that all of the doors and windows were custom-designed. We are not purchasing anything from a catalog. Um, every single window, even the operable windows, which are very risky, um, to do are custom-designed by, um, our team and our engineers. And they're being fabricated on-site, um, and they're being, um, sort of, uh, tested on-site. Um, and so from, from my perspective, not only are we making a building for future tenants to get creative and do the amazing things that they do, but just the design and the construction of this building is also similarly, um, designed and refined and tested. And I do want to credit the owner for having such a commitment in terms of financial, um, financial commitment and the willingness to, to, to allow us to use real steel for all these windows. Nothing is aluminum. Nothing is purchased as a product. Um, and so the character of the design and the construction sequencing and the construction activity really is, you can't, you just can't get more Smoky Hollow. um than than these buildings um i- in many respects. Uh yeah, so I do hope that that provided a little bit of context in terms of the reasoning for the additional height and why one property next to the other pays a penalty. Also, to retain these buildings and not pay a penalty in height, to allow the developers who have a site that has an existing building to keep it uh and not have to demolish it to to get to fit their building in the height. Um and also just the commitment fr- from the owner. If if anybody here knows Mark, and if you imagine him, he's he's wearing a hard hat and he's there every single day, you know, futzing with something, testing things, and really doing the building and the design um in such a way that's very uh synonymous with the culture of Smoky Hollow. Um with that, I'll end.
All right, well, thank you for those comments. All right, this is the public communication portion. Uh anyone who wants to make comment on this agenda item, please on Zoom, raise your hand and let us know. Uh our friend Rafa Pimentel has a comment. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, and it's good to see everybody. He is Zoom, uh com- um planning commission. Um first of all, we'd like to uh state my name, my name is Rafael Pimentel, and I'm a special representative with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. Uh second of all, I'd like to uh congratulate Mr. Mister on a great presentation. Nice, very, very nice presentation. Uh but what we'd like to talk about is the community benefit that we feel is being left out. Um and that community benefit is the local hire. The local residents being able to work on projects such as this. Uh we are very familiar uh with this project, specifically the one that is being constructed currently now on the north side. Uh I have myself have visited that site uh multiple times. And um back in November tenth of two thousand twenty-one, our organization, the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, filed a notice of labor dispute with the applicant. Uh and the reason for filing the notice of labor dispute with them is because when we did our job block and we spoke to the workers that were on site, uh lo and behold, nobody was in, lived in the area or any of the surrounding communities of the South Bay cities, whether it be Torrance, Hawthorne, um Manhattan Beach, Landale, uh El Segundo itself. So you had workers coming in from uh other parts of Southern California to do this work. And our position is is that probably the greatest community benefit to any project like this would be local hire. Uh we feel that labor is uh is is a great resource and a great benefit to the community. If we have local residents working on these types of projects, then um they would be able to work where they live, spend their money where they live, and that would definitely benefit the community one hundred percent. So in light of all these facts, again, great presentation, but uh as far as the Southwest Regional Council is concerned, we would ask the planning commission not approve um the second phase of this project on the south side of that site plan. Do not adopt it um at least until we have a conversation. Um we feel that uh local hire and skilled and trained workforce should be included in the community benefit plan. And it's definitely going to impact uh residents of the South Bay cities and people in El Segundo. Now, that concludes my remarks. Thank you very much for your time, and uh if the applicant would like to meet with us as they met with the chairman of the planning committee, we are available to meet as well. Thank you very much.
Anyone else on Zoom wishing to make a public comment about this agenda item, please raise your hand. All right, not seeing anyone, we'll go ahead and close public communication. There's no public comment in the chambers today. And uh just to be absolutely clear, there is, in our El Segundo Smokey Hollow Community Benefit Plan, there's no requirement for local hire, is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct. Okay, good. Okay, now um since planning, public comments are closed, all comments will come from the dais. I've got some questions about the traffic mitigation payment on page fifty. Uh there was two hundred and fifteen pages of intersection impact reports associated with this project in the packet. And it looks like after all that analysis, there's a payment of some one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars for intersection improvements, is that true?
Yes, that is correct. You're you're talking about the fair share contributions for traffic impacts, yes.
Yeah, can you, someone or or maybe you, sir, just kind of break down for us how that fair share contribution works?
Right, so my understanding is that um and and I may ask uh Mr. Norton to come on if he's able, or a representative uh from M I D to talk to this a little bit, but essentially uh all the traffic improvements that were identified in the original E I R, uh they are uh there's a total value, and then um they look at for the fair share proportion from each project. In this particular case, for the the traffic improvements, the lane configurations, I think you're talking about um are valued at upwards of two point five million dollars. Um for this particular project, five point three percent of that two million dollars would be the fair share, which equates to one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's for a uh second eastbound left turn lane and new right turn overlap signal phase um off of the P C H and El Segundo Boulevard area. And then there's a four point seven percent fair share for a new right turn overlap signal uh which is i- in the in the area of about uh, the total for that is eighty thousand dollars. At four point seven percent, the fair share for this particular developer would be um a little less than four thousand dollars. So all told, it's uh just about a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of uh of monetary contribution uh that would be required.
And do all of the projects we review have this fair share mitigation requirement? I'm thinking about that office building we approved recently on P C H between the In-N-Out and the Chick-fil-A, where we were told, oh, they don't have enough parking, but they're going to carpool and use the bus. Was were there any fair share payments on that one? That's probably for your time, Mr. Allen. Paul Eduardo, do you remember that?
Um I don't recall for the specifics, but I think in this case, it's only for those projects within Smoky Hollow.
So only Smoky Hollow has this fair share? So the next project we're going to talk about, they're not going to make any fair share traffic mitigation payments?
There are uh specific um mitigation measures related to that other project.
Okay, we'll get to that. All right, so within the Smokey Hollow revised plan, we have this loss of use fair share traffic mitigation, but that wouldn't apply anywhere outside Smoky Hollow?
I I I can clarify, i- it could. It there's, the the way that mitigation measures um are are crafted uh today are are a little bit different than they used to be where fair share um would be a typical mitigation measure, uh but but moving forward, V M T, which is vehicle miles traveled, is the metric that we that we are required to use to analyze impacts. However, uh I've absent of a better word at the moment, I'll call it an impact, but it's not related to SEQA or or environmental. But uh public works and planning can coordinate to analyze potential impacts, again, not SEQA, not related to environmental, to intersection, intersections or roadway capacity, and require uh contributions to address those those impacts on a project-to-project basis. So it'll be different for every project, but we certainly have the capacity or or the capability of doing that analysis, but it will be different for each project.
Okay, so SEQA no longer does loss of service at intersections, they do this vehicle miles travel uh calculation. But under our general plan, we still have authority to ask for mitigation on impacts and loss of service or traffic.
We we still can do that.
Okay, okay, great. Uh I hope we are doing that.
It's something that that the public works director and I will will continue to coordinate on.
Okay, all right. So yeah, uh I want to thank the applicant for the presentation. Um i- the project is exceptional in design, and uh hearing your presentation, I I was reminded of our conversation where it it was basically we we want to build the same building, but we can't because of the the grade or or whatever it is. And so I, you know, I I I think this is a good example of a developer basically trying to do what we asked for when we created this Smokey Hollow plan. We wanted to transform this rundown industrial area into this creative office space. We wanted to keep a lot of this history and architecture there and then have some type of community benefit checklist of bike lanes and parks and open space and give the flexibility to the developer to basically come up with what they think the market is going to want and what's going to work. Um and as far as the rezoning of a subzone, I I think it is a creative solution to what this problem is. Because as was explained, he he would not be able to make a variance. Um but he's also not allowed to build the exact same building down the street from the building that's currently under construction. With respect to uh Kevin and and Jay, the concerns about that stretch between this project and P C H, the only thing you would be blocking, I think, would be the the refinery from the residential area. Uh and we've got SATCO there, you've got the the building at the corner, which are already developed. Um so I'm not so much concerned about there being another sixty-foot building, and even if there were, it sounds like it would have to come through this commission for approval. But I I for one, I I I think it's a, it's it's a beautiful project, and um you know, I I I have really, I don't have the concerns the other commission has about the unknowns of other potential projects being sixty feet and being monstrous in that area, but I'm open to discussion.
I agree that I like this project, and on its merits, I have no issue with the sixty-foot. But then in hearing the conversation, it's like, well, there is a larger, you're at seven and a half feet versus three feet. To me, is that not grounds for a variance? Because you can't build what your neighbor can build.
Uh we're we're probably not in a position to navigate the the findings for a variance at this time.
Right, and I understand that. I guess I'm just a little frustrated that we have, in order to move this project forward, we do have to take in a much larger swath of land. And I don't want to hold them up because they've been held up for a while. But and it just doesn't feel like it fits across that whole subarea.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Chime in on on this particular topic here, and and thank you to to the applicant and um and Mr. Ba- Ballion. And and we don't want any projects to be penalized um for for trying to do the right thing, and I appreciate the the height explanation, and I appreciate the effort to retain, I especially appreciate the effort to to retain the character of the building. And I think that this particular project has a good case, um you know, to 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 allow this this height, you know, I just have, again, I just have a little concern over this blanket approval of this sub area, you know, to have greater heights throughout, you know, that thirty acres. Um just because I don't know if other places have the to- topography issues um or if they're they're even attempting to retain the character. Um so but yeah, I do appreciate the efforts, I'm just concerned about such a blanket thirty-acre approval for this. And while, you know, Chair Bud, you know, you said it does have to come back to the planning commission, but I believe, as as I understand it, because it 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 has um th- this subarea has thi- this amendment that we can't discuss or w- we can't approve or disapprove the project based on the merits of having the the height, it can only be based on the the community benefits plan. Is that correct? Um, Michael?
Yeah, the the findings are based on the community benefits program, uh which are outlined in the staff report.
But we could find that the community benefits don't justify the next increase in height, right? It's project by project, isn't that how it works? It's like you you've got your set number of rights, and if you want to go above and beyond that, you have to give the city more community benefits. So it's kind of like a negotiation with every applicant.
Right, and ultimately it would be up to the commission, uh you know, I mean, we could say that it it's sufficient enough uh uh or enough community benefits to allow for that, but ultimately, it the the final decision rests with you as a planning commission or city council, depending on uh, you know, the recommendation. Um I mean, the attorney may want to weigh in, but the way the way I look at it from a staff perspective, yeah, I mean, it's it's your decision in terms of whether what they're offering in terms of community benefits is enough of of an offset to allow for that additional height.
Yeah, I I just think it's an easier conversation to say that it doesn't fit within the the design of the the area. It doesn't fit within the intent of the the specific plan. Um versus, no, you have to give us more. You know, that seems like a harder discussion to have um uh during the negotiations. But wh- uh you know, but y- i- yes, it ultimately does have to go through the planning commission. Um but so as as a- again, as I understand it, um the project applicant chose to to go this route versus seeking a variance for the specific project, and and we don't know why. I I mean, and I don't know if we were in a position to ask why, uh does it take longer, is it more, and I I I see you there. Does it take longer, does it cost a little bit more money? I I just want to understand why that decision was made, if there are projects that are coming up that they want to do, I I I don't know. So I I see, I I don't know if this is a appropriate forum for for David to respond, but.
I'll I'll agree with you, I'm not sure that I really understand the the variance versus how we have to create a subarea.
Well, the the variance was decided not to be applicable in this in this scenario. I actually, I don't know if it was considered, I I'm sort of um assuming so since the path that was chosen.
Hypothetically, let's say it's off the table and they come and they speak with you in one way. Is it a, is it, eh, they could actually ask for a variance for this specific project, could they not?
Sure.
Okay, so they could have.
I I, may I uh, could the chair?
Yeah.
Uh huh.
Hi, this is this is Brad Meisner. Given that the the Smokey Hollow specific plan sets that cap on the height, that becomes the regulatory document in place. Uh so you would have to have the ability to uh a variance, you could not process a variance that would take you above the regulatory document. So you'd have to have some more space within that document if you ever wanted to consider a a variance above and beyond sort of just the baseline zoning standards.
So it's, the base is fifty feet, but allowable ten percent more to be fifty-five. So they, so nobody within the Smokey Hollow plan could ask for anything higher than fifty-five under any variance, under any consideration? That's a question.
I I I think that's right, I'd I'd have to um, you know, defer to staff just in terms of how that specific provision within the uh the specific plan is interpreted.
Can the subzone be one block? Versus thirty acres?
How, yeah, how about us, exactly?
Yeah, I I think there is.
What creates a subarea, what it, how how do you identify something greater than than the specific project itself?
Yeah, that's that's a tough question, and that that's a question that is is answered in the courts, you know, so spot zoning is the typical term that's used to to navigate away from making land use decisions that are specific to one specific site, but the size of that site uh is probably variable depending on 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 the judge that you're in front of, whether or not you're talking about a large enough space. Uh in some cities, they identify a a minimum of one acre. Uh in some cities, they they say that, you know, half an acre or three acres is is the appropriate size in order to justify away from it being spot zoning. Uh but there there's not a formulaic answer to that, there's not a specific uh answer to address the, what what is too small and what is too, you know, big enough.
Just to, if I may, Mr. Chair, just to add to the speculation, for lack of a better term, about the variance is that there's also a uniqueness factor. It's not just that a certain standard cannot be met. It has to be attributable to a unique typographical or other character of of the real property that prevents it from complying with that particular provision. So I I would encourage the focus to be on the entitlements that are sought and um the findings that had been presented in association with with those entitlements.
Eh, and uh just to, one last point, if I can make a recommendation to maybe continue the progression of this conversation would be that, you know, that the planning commission-
the progression of this conversation would be that, you know, that the planning commission is making a recommendation tonight to the city council, and so if there is a point of concern about the size and scale of the subarea, maybe that's something that could be recommended, um, and, and staff and the applicant can go back and, and work together to address that concern about the scale or size of the subarea that would then go to council as part of their consideration.
Yeah, I personally would like to see a smaller subarea. I, to me, it feels um, a- almost unnecessary, but I can see, a- again, it, it has nothing to do with the applicant, the project's awesome, I think it's gonna be amazing. They're doing a beautiful job architecturally and repurposing the buildings, and yes, that one building should not be penalized, being that they literally are mirroring it on the, on the other end of a, of a higher topography, so um, this just, I don't know, I don't, I, I think the subarea, that's what I would like to see have happen, personally speaking.
Well, can we get consensus on the dais that with respect to this project, there are no objections to the sixty foot height? And then we're gonna have a separate conversation about the length and extent of the subarea, and if we wanna adjust that? Does that make sense?
Uh, that would be my consensus.
Um, I agree with that completely.
Yeah, I, I, I do, Ryan. Um, I do have a, a different concern, and it's not related to sixty feet. So I guess I'd like to just find a time to talk about that before we move on.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, the, the buildings are beautiful, I think the architecture is, is just right for Smoky Hollow. There's no question between, uh, one forty Oregon and the new property. Uh, it's gonna be a big wall, uh, it's, it's, it's articulated nicely, so I think that the architect has done a great job of, of softening that height. Uh, my concern is really about the public realm. And the, the coffee shop, the cafe is a, is a nice nod, it's a tiny little space. Uh, the, the, um, the public space behind that is, you know, a couple benches and picnic tables are nice. I, I think that will be a nice courtyard for the people that live in that, or that work in that building. Um, in twenty eighteen, a lot of people, a lot of members of this commission approved the, uh, Smoky Hollow specific plan. And many of the elements that are in the design of this architecture are, uh, reflect that specific plan, which is great. But one of the key things about the Smoky Hollow specific plan were the introduction of more pedestrian-friendly streets, uh, complete streets, they're called. And, uh, Franklin, uh, Franklin, uh, Road, uh, Boulevard is, was one of the key arteries that was ultimately designed to be maybe one-way, uh, a combination of bicycle pedestrian, far more, um, bumpouts that are, uh, planted, that slow traffic. Uh, possibly angled parking in places. Uh, I realize that this is probably not the responsibility of the architect and the developer, but it's really a question for city staff. With a such a large project like this, really starting the look and feel of Smoky Hollow and its new, uh, i- its new persona, when and how do these complete streets, which are the true public benefit, how do those start to get incorporated into the plan? And so, um, I just wanna make sure that if we are looking at a subarea of a bunch of very tall buildings, that we don't forget the really important public pedestrian-level space that we all were expecting to see when the specific plan went through. Um, that's, that's one topic. The other thing that we all talked about when the specific plan, several members of the commission said, hey, why is there, can we re- as long as we're rezoning Smoky Hollow, can we look at residential in Smoky Hollow? And the, uh, the, 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 the planning, um, the, the planning chair at the time, not, not the chairman of the, of the commission, but, um, at staff said, this is not really the time to talk about residential, let's do that some other time, you know, let's, let's get this Smoky Hollow plan done, but uh, the nod was, we'll have a couple caretaker units, and, you know, maybe that's a photographer's studio where there's a, a live workspace. Some of those things might happen, but for the most part, let's talk residential later. And so now some of these big projects are coming in and the caretaker units are, are removed, the residential, uh, uh, aspect is being removed completely, so as we look at other residential projects, even later tonight, I wanna make sure that we are not uh, closing the door on residential opportunities in Smoky Hollow. Again, this, this project is not the, the catalyst for that, but I just wanna make sure that uh, we, we, we be open-minded about appropriate uses in Smoky Hollow.
Thanks, Jay, and, and I'm glad you brought that up, cuz I recall when we asked about why isn't there residential like we have in the downtown specific plan, um, and Paul and Eduardo, you might have to correct me if I'm wrong, I was told that during the outreach, those businesses in Smoky Hollow did not want residential? Does that, do you recall that at all, Paul?
It wasn't, uh, high enough in the priorities. It was mentioned here and there during our outreach.
Mm-hmm.
But it wasn't one of those key concepts that, uh, drove, uh, what the plan ended up being.
Okay. So, so Jay, I think your comments are, are well-taken with respect to how do we deal with increased residential, but I, I don't think this application is a forum for that. That might be more squarely suited in our quarterly housing update meetings that we're gonna have soon here on the horizon with staff to where we're trying to start taking a long-term approach to our ten-year commitment to housing. Uh, and then we can look at east of Sepulveda, PCH, whatever you call it, we can look at Smoky Hollow, but uh, what we're dealing with tonight is a, I would call an accommodation. Um, the only path forward for this development is to create a subzone within Smoky Hollow in order to cr- increase the height. And I believe this is a situation that wasn't created by the applicant. He's done everything he can to help bring to life the goals that we set forth as a planning commission of how do we encourage development and transform this area? And he's trying to do exactly that. If other people want to do that and go sixty feet, I might be okay with that, I might not. I don't know until I see that exact project. Um, but for purposes of what we're dealing with tonight, I, I, I think we need to find a determination that the commission either approves or disapproves this project. I haven't heard anyone disapprove the project. I think the only conversation left is, do we wanna make a recommendation to city council that the size of this sub overlay needs to be decreased? And i- if that's direct, if we have consensus on that, then let's have a conversation so we can get a direction to staff and they can report it to city council. I for one, I have, I have no problem going all the way out to PCH. But I'm open to hear the comments of the other commissioners who do have concerns about the size of this, this, uh, subzone.
And I think part of why, for me, what Jay brought up, it's getting mixed into this conversation is because a sixty-foot height limit, to me, makes residential extremely feasible. A fifty-foot height limit is restrictive. It's gonna be cost prohibitive cuz you're gonna have ground floor, office, retail, and you're not gonna be able to go up enough stories to accommodate real dense residential, but sixty feet, you're kinda there, so part of me says, well, let's just do that and let the conversation naturally evolve, and some group will come in and make a request to have real residential. I think it also is the only way, I'm happy to be wrong about this, but that you get pedestrian-oriented streets. If we keep approving office and, and light industrial R and D, you're just, you're not gonna get that pedestrian-friendly initial intention of maybe Franklin angled street parking, you know, pedestrian-oriented streets, so I, I feel like it's hard to separate the two.
Right, but we would not even start discussing adding residential until we've reached out to people who own businesses and own property in that neighborhood to find out what they want, right? I mean, it's one thing for us to sit here and, and say, you, uh, developer of property in Smoky Hollow who, who thought you were having this great office building and can now be surrounded by apartments. Like, we need to get input from the stakeholders. This is, this is a long-term conversation. And what's weird is we just, we just resigned the Smoky Hollow plan to get these creative office buildings in there.
I would like to say it was before my time. And I would've pushed very hard for residence.
Feels like yesterday.
But Michelle, maybe you could elaborate on that. From a developer's thought process, you, you mean that, um, to allow a sixty-foot building would allow for proper residential on the top, like penthouse suites or something? As opposed to a fifty-foot building?
Yeah, I don't even mean penthouse suites, I mean the project that we're gonna hear later needs to get to eighty-plus feet to justify residential. Sixty feet is maybe the bare minimum where you can get real apartments. But I agree, that's outside the scope of this conversation.
No, but it is a good point to, it is a good point. Cuz I do think residential is important, and I do think what Jay brought up is really true to continue to create a community. Smoky Hollow is an interesting area, and if, if I know it's not on the docket this evening to talk about that, but I do think it needs to be talked about far, far further than than the small units that are allowable at this point, but.
Um, so let's answer Commissioner Heschler's question that he asked first, which is, what is staff doing to get Franklin Street to what we think we want Franklin Street to be? Does that make sense? We, we, we approved these drawings of a walking path on Franklin Street. What is the city doing to make that a reality? Yeah, I, I, we lost our Public Works Director, I, so I can't, I don't know the timing off the top of my head unless Paul knows, um, just from ancillary knowledge, but Public Works is working on a pilot program to begin implementing the complete streets concept in Smoky Hollow. They were working on identifying a street to start with, and, uh, Paul, do you have any additional information?
Yeah, a couple thoughts on that, if I may, uh, but just to cover what Michael just mentioned, yes, the, the Public Works Department is in that design phase uh, for, uh, converting two, uh, of those north-south, uh, streets in Smoky Hollow into, uh, one-way streets to provide angled parking. Uh, and, and other sort of physical improvements to the public right-of-way. So that's one, uh, initiative that the city is undertaking. Um, it is funded by, uh, parking-in-fee fees that we collect from projects in Els- in, uh, Smoky Hollow. So that's one way that beyond this first, uh, pilot project, the city will gradually start to convert more and more of those streets into one-way and making public improvements along those streets. Um, along Franklin, though, which, um, Commissioner Heschler mentioned, uh, one more way to, uh, expedite, let's say, some of those improvements would be through this community benefit plan process. Uh, the community benefit plan process allows the, the city to ask for either some physical improvements to the right-of-way along Pop- Franklin Avenue, you know, next to projects, or to ask for, uh, financial contributions to a public infrastructure fund that we set up for that purpose. So that can be another public benefit that is requested during these, uh, requests, the community benefit plan requests. The specific plan also has some other implementation sort of strategies, such as, you know, looking for grant funding, uh, or, and, and other methods to get some funding for public projects along Franklin. But I don't remember all the specifics along, along, uh, in that regard, so I hope that helps answer part of your question, Commissioner.
It does, thank you. And I realize that's not tied to the, to the height topic that we're talking about. It's just that when these projects don't come in front of planning commission very often, uh, there's very few forums to kinda keep those intents in check. So, I mean, that's the reason I brought them up.
All right, um, so let's have a discussion about, or does someone wanna make a proposal about reducing the size of this subzone? Any suggestions or comments?
I would like to see it reduced, I don't know, I don't know. You, you brought up and, um, what, I don't know what the normal is, I don't know what makes a subarea. Sometimes you say it's one acre and other times it's it's, uh, I don't know, I don't know what's.
Can you zoom in on that map on the screen?
Do you wanna see this?
Without my glasses.
Or, or this one, or this one? If that helps you.
It does, if I hold it far away.
I mean, we can just make the general comment that the commission would like it reduced without giving any guidance to city council, or we can tell them to stop at a certain city street. Um, I'm open to suggestions on how do you wanna resolve it. But.
I mean, does it need to go, I guess?
From.
Does it need to go west?
How about if he, how, how about it just goes, if it goes east?
Oregon.
It only goes east.
No, but, no.
It starts two streets.
That's at center, yeah.
Like it starts, what is that, center? I could literally.
Yes.
So if instead of it's center, it just starts at Oregon.
Center. It starts at Oregon, the project starts at Oregon.
Right, but if the subarea, instead of going as far west as center.
Just went east.
Just went east.
Exactly.
I have a lot less.
To Illinois.
And you also have larger parcels there, which seems to make more sense.
And it's closer toward, to the Infineon, it's closer to PCH.
So instead of center, you're looking at Oregon.
Oregon, Oregon Street.
So Nevada, center.
Franklin would be the furthest north.
Yeah.
That's how it is.
Obviously, right, and then, so it would just go to Illinois. From Oregon to, east to Illinois.
From Oregon east through Sepulveda, PCH.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Cuz you've got skyscrapers on the other side of PCH, so who cares?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that, that seems reasonable. Does staff any problems with that? We recommend, uh, changing the zone to start at Oregon and go east through PCH?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any, any problem with that. We can, we can make the, uh, the westerly boundary, uh, Oregon Street for the subarea.
Oh, now we can read it, thank you. Okay, uh, Jay and, and, uh, Kevin, can we get a consensus on a recommendation to move that dividing line east to Oregon through PCH?
Yeah, that sounds good to me. Works for me.
All right, um, any other comments? All right, can I get a motion, please?
You can, if I know what I'm motioning. Do I have to name all of the resolutions?
Uh, you, you, you would have to, um, yes.
So, a motion to approve twenty-nine twelve to twenty-nine fifteen with an amended subarea that goes right east of Oregon.
I, I think staff understands what the motion is, yes. I think we have enough.
Is that so hard to deal with?
We have, we have a motion, uh, to approve as amended. Can I get a second, please?
No second.
All right, can we get a roll call vote on this, please?
Chair Budino?
Aye.
Vice Chair Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Heschler?
Yes.
Commissioner Magai?
Aye.
And Commissioner Keldoff?
Yes.
Okay, approved. Uh, thank you, everyone. I wanna thank the applicant, uh, for your patience with this, this whole endeavor you're un- undertaking, and thank you for your investment in our town. It's, it's very much appreciated. All right, our next item, we're having a public hearing on the Pacific Coast Commons Project located at four-seven-five through six-two-nine North Pacific Highway. And can we have a staff report, please?
Sure, before, before we go ahead into the staff report, um, El Segundo TV, we're gonna share a, um, a, uh, PowerPoint from our computer there. Uh, anyhow, before I turn it over to, to, uh, Mr. Samara, so, uh, yeah, what's here before you has kind of been a, 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 a has had a, a path to get here. Uh, if you recall, it initially, uh, uh, started off with, with having this come before you in, in back in December. Uh, at that point in time, there were, uh, some comments, comments that were, that staff had received in response, uh, particularly in response to the environmental, which then caused us to, uh, to, uh, uh, have our consultant help us with an appropriate response. Uh, that has since been done, and, uh, that resulted in, uh, some, some, uh, some additional information that was, uh, uh, provided. Ultimately, uh, after looking at the, um, amendments to the environmental. Ultimately, uh after looking at the uh amendments to the environmental, uh that was deemed to be appropriate uh response and uh had did not warrant any recirculation of the document. And so anyhow, so that has been properly noticed for tonight's meeting uh because uh um it was a uh you know, because at at in at the December ninth meeting, it was not continued to date certain, so anyhow, just wanna kind of introduce that. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to uh Mr. Samaras who will give you a a presentation, uh some background in terms of how we got here uh with regards to the DA uh and uh the the specifics of the project and ultimately our recommendation on it.
Okay, uh good evening, Commissioners, Chair Baldino and fellow commissioners. Um I will try to keep my uh presentation as as short as possible, it is a big project, you you received a large packet, so uh I will try to keep it as as fast as possible, but we do have to cover uh a lot of ground here. Um so, the Pacific Coast uh Commons Specific Plan. I'm going into some, since a brief overview of the site and the project, and then we will go into a discussion on the individual entitlements related to this project and some project specifics. So the project uh today, uh as you can see occupies two large blocks on um along Pacific Coast Highway, between the Pacific Coast Highway and Indiana Street and then Holly Avenue and Palm Avenue uh nor on the south and uh north side. Uh the zoning today is uh general commercial for the southern part of this uh uh specific plan area and and the northern part is zoned parking. Uh the style, the site is today developed as follows, uh the southern part is um uh is occupied by an an open parking lot, it's a one-hundred-and-sixty-seven space parking lot that uh serves the existing Aloft Hotel, a two-hundred-and-forty-six-room uh hotel. Uh next to it going north, from south to north, is the Fairfield Inn and Suites Hotel, uh three-hundred-and-fifty-room uh hotel. And uh right at the corner of Mariposa and Pacific Coast Highway is a vacant today uh food and beverage building. That used to hold banquets and other sort of uh events and has a had a restaurant in there as well. Uh north of Mariposa, sort of the north part of the uh specific plan area and the project area, there is an open parking lot, uh two-hundred-and-thirteen spaces in that parking lot. Uh nestled in between the seventy-six gas station and the College Junior uh uh restaurant. And you can see that the the specific plan and the project has uh some frontage along Palm Avenue, kind of a narrow uh part of the project up there. The site is uh six-point-three uh eight acres in size. And that's the zoning currently at the site. So the proposal, um this is gonna be just a brief overview, uh we can, we'll get into some of the specifics of each portion of the site, so um essentially, the development project consists of three areas or three sites. Uh PCC South, so the southern portion of the site, which is basically what is today an open parking lot uh next to the Aloft Hotel. The applicant uh proposes to build a mixed-use building with a hundred-and-twenty apartment units uh along with uh some commercial space, about fifty-seven-hundred square feet of commercial space fronting on PCH, you see that in the uh orange reddish color along PCH. And uh around or within that building is a parking structure, a three-hundred-and-thirty-six space parking structure to provide parking for that part of the development. Going to the north again, um at the site of the vacant today uh food and beverage building, that was part of the old Hacienda Hotel. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing building and uh construct in its place uh a uh parking structure that holds two-hundred-and-fifteen parking spaces that will also have a a commercial component along the PCH frontage, about thirty-two-hundred square feet of commercial uses. Now this uh site will provide parking primarily for the Fairfield Inn and then Fairfield Inn and Suites Hotel. Going further north is the uh PCC North Site or part of the uh project. The applicant proposes a mixed-use building with a hundred-and-thirty-seven apartment units and along with uh about twenty-two-hundred square feet of commercial space along PCH and a two-hundred-and-fifty-two space parking structure sort of within that building envelope. And at the very end of the site at the north is a a building that uh consists of six townhome uh buildings uh that are part of this uh development. So the, this is basically briefly what each uh site involves. Now overall, if you add all that together, that that is essentially two-hundred-and-sixty-three residential units, eleven-thousand square feet of commercial space and uh seven-hundred-and-ninety-two parking spaces in those proposed parking structures. Um now, as I mentioned earlier, uh the zoning for the subject property today is commercial and parking. Now the, this type of zoning does not permit a a mixed-use commercial and residential project. So as a result, the applicant has had to request certain discretionary applications to make it possible to develop the property in this manner. So we will go over some of those entitlements uh one by one or in groupings. So um this is the list of the proposed discretionary applications. Um the ones that are underlined here are basically, I would say, the four sort of large frame, you know, uh entitlements that help establish the regulatory framework for the project area to basically set the rules to allow for a mixed-use project that I just described. So we'll go over some of that uh next. So we have the specific plan application and the related general plan application, a specific plan um sets uh development standards. It lists permitted uses for the specific plan area, such as what I described, residential apartments, commercial uses, hotel uses and other uh use, related uses. It sets uh residential density limits. Uh on average, for the specific plan area, the density is roughly eighty-six units per acre. It sets uh height limits and there's a range of about seventy to ninety feet as far as the uh height is concerned. It sets parking uh uh standards and we'll we'll cover parking in a little bit more detail uh during the presentation. There is a general plan amendment and a zone change that is required to kind of effectuate this this plan, the specific plan. So there's a general plan amendment that changes the designation from general commercial and parking into a specific plan uh land use uh designation. And also a corresponding zone change, to change the zoning to Pacific Coast Commons Specific Plan. Now what are some of the main reasons for supporting the specific plan and the general plan amendment and zone change? Well, the main reasons are, this helps um the city um meet our uh need for housing, market rate and affordable. And it's also an appropriate location for this type of project. So discussing the need for housing first, this is a table that shows uh the RENA requirements. You saw the uh adopted uh housing element very recently in in January that uh listed these RENA requirements. And uh overall, there's a need for five-hundred-and-twenty-one um units to be accommodated in the next eight-year period in the city. Uh covering a wide range of uh affordability levels. Well, this particular project, if you see the uh rows that are bracketed, makes uh a significant contribution towards meeting those requirements, you know. Uh a large chunk of the low-income category, for instance, the requirement under our current RENA is ninety-nine units and this project would provide almost a third of that. The next main reason for supporting a general plan amendment is the location. So you see the site uh sort of highlighted in red in the middle of this screen and all the different uses in the area. So you have schools within walking distance, you have parks and recreational facilities in in walking distance, very close, shopping centers, grocery stores, and a large employment sector just east of this uh location. And finally, you have access to the transit uh facilities, uh the Green Line, which is uh half a mile away from this site. So those those reasons combined make this a good location for uh this type of project. Uh next, we'll just cover briefly, I will cover some of the other entitlements, you know, so from the broad range, from the broad picture to more narrow project, you know, level uh entitlements, subdivision, the site plan review and the dedication requirements and waivers. So just covering the subdivision briefly, um the applicant proposes to subdivide the pro- the site, the overall site into six uh large parcels. And each of those parcels will basically um be created for the buil- for a building. So there'll be a lot for, a parcel for the uh PCC South Building, another lot just for the Aloft Hotel, a lot for Fairfield Inn and Suites and so on. And uh there are up to um forty commercial condominium spaces provided for the commercial uh uh uses or space on site and also six residential condominium units, the townhomes that I mentioned earlier at the very north of the site. Site plan review, uh this request involves a review of the physical project, the physical development that is being proposed. It it's intended to ensure it complies with development standards and guidelines in this proposed new specific plan. So the development, as I mentioned earlier, occurs on three sites. Uh and we'll look at each site in a little bit more detail in the next few uh slides. There's uh three parking structures, as I mentioned, with uh roughly eight-hundred parking spaces for the uses and there's also an extra uh thirty-three upgrade parking spaces on the Fairfield uh Inn and Suites site. So there's about a total of eight-hundred-and-twenty-five parking spaces provided or proposed on site. And at this point, I'd like to go, uh let's see, go into the next slide. Just wanted to jump into a little bit of a parking uh discussion here, cause I know that's a very big uh topic, so for information purposes here, I'm showing you a little bit of a comparison between what the Pacific Commons Specific Plan uh standards are for parking and what the existing uh municipal code requires for parking. Uh as you can see, when it comes to the residential uses, the exist, the municipal code today requires basically two units, two spaces for every unit. Whereas the specific plan takes a little different approach and uh it has set a standard that relates to the size of the units or the number of bedrooms, you know. So the fewer bedrooms the units have, the less parking it is required. The more, like the two-bedroom units, the more parking they are required to have. Uh I have also placed there the uh commercial requirements in the municipal code and the hotel requirements. You'll notice that I didn't have a specific rate under the specific plan. The specific plan doesn't have a specific parking rate for commercial uses or hotel uses. It's, it states that um for individual developments in the plan area, uh the requirements will be determined through a uh parking demand study. And uh that's what the applicant has done in this case. In fact, um even the residential spaces that are required in the specific plan uh can be modified, you know, uh through a parking demand study if a a study demonstrates that less parking is required than even what is is uh the standard today in the in that specific plan.
Wait a minute, Paul, isn't, there's a parking study already in this packet?
That's right, yes.
That's what those numbers are based on?
Uh, yes.
In the plan, right? So explain to me what you're saying, they can do a new study and get even less parking?
Great, uh let me go over the numbers on the next slide and I'll I'll answer that question. So based on these requirements that I've shown here, um I'll show you what the actual space not requirements would be, how many spaces would be required. So, um based on the um PCC specific plan requirements and the parking demand study that was conducted, a total of seven-hundred-and-ninety parking spaces would be required for the uh for this development, for this project. And the municipal code today, if you took each individual use and calculate the parking according to the rates in the municipal code, there'll be more more parking required. So the applicant conducted a parking demand study that's part of your packet and uh that study took into account um a lot of factors such as um the proximity to transit, uh took into account other similar sort of mixed-use development in other places, uh how much parking they needed. They conducted an uh a survey of the actual hotel needs of the uh Aloft and the Fairfield Inn and Suites Hotels. They did a survey of the parking at the hotels to see, are they utilizing all their parking today? And uh based on all the factors that were considered, they determined that, you know, they don't need uh to have uh as many as in the municipal code today. Um and for the commercial and the hotel uh uses, they identified uh the numbers that would be required. Now, when it comes to the residential spaces, actually, um the number that you see there, three-hundred-and-sixty-four units uh spaces is actually what's required based on the specific plan rate. Remember what I mentioned, one space for a studio, one and a half for a one-bedroom, two spaces for a two-bedroom unit. The parking demand study actually showed that the residential component could uh provide even less parking and still meet its needs. However, the applicant elected to provide more parking than what the parking demand study uh uh determined was absolutely necessary, because they just wanted to be more conservative in that area. So I hope that helps answer the question that he had, uh Chair Baldino. And how does that compare to the provided parking on site? Seven-hundred-and-ninety spaces required according to the uh specific plan requirements and there's eight-hundred-and-twenty-five uh proposed throughout the the entire specific plan area. And uh those parking structures uh will serve as overflow for other parts of the plan. So if there is a need for some sharing of parking, it will be feasible to do that uh across parcels. So moving on in the site plan review uh evaluation and the the report has a lot of information on that, this particular uh part of the review. Uh we'll go over the individual sites real quickly, as quickly as I can, so the uh PCC South site, so this site has uh, as you can see, access on both Indiana Street and uh PCH. The buildings are wrapped around a parking structure. Um and uh one of the improvements that staff uh suggested during the review process was, well, is there a way to create uh some uh space that is more public, accessible to the public, such as sort of an opening in the building envelope uh along PCH to create perhaps a a courtyard, you know, where um pedestrians can be attracted to and are encouraged to stay there and linger on the site. Um this was a a significant change in the overall structure and design of the project, uh which was difficult for the applicant team to accommodate, so instead, staff has included a condition in the uh in your resolution of uh approval that requires to the extent feasible that some uh entries into these commercial spaces are recessed to help kind of make up for that la- lack of a big public open space. Now this is the facade of that same building, uh so the facade of the building is very very well-designed. It has a variety of materials and colors and changes in the building plan, balconies and awnings. So all these features provide a lot of architectural interest along PCH and around the building.
And I'm sorry, Paul, can you back up?
Yes.
So do do the uh, do the re- are those recesses you, the city staff has asked for, are those reflected in this rendering? in this rendering?
Uh, not yet in this rendering. Our condition of approval sort of basically states that the applicant will submit plans during the building permit review process, and the applicant will work with staff to find ways to create some recessed entries for some of those commercial spaces. So we will work with the applicant to kind of improve that aspect a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Well, these drawings aren't the actual project, right? We're approving a development agreement that would give them entitlements to develop up to these standards, but what they actually design may vary from this, correct?
Well, actually, this site plan review application that is part of the entitlement package includes the design as well, the site plan and the elevations and those details.
Okay.
There may be some minor changes during the plant check process for building permits, as long as those are not substantial, there will not be a reason for us to come back to the commission for a review again. And that's what we hope to do with some of these conditions of approval. So the next slide shows a rendering of the same building at the corner of Holly and Indiana. As you can see, the building is a little shorter on this side than the building is on the PCH side. It kind of steps down a little bit to reduce that contrast with the residential buildings across the street. And again, it incorporates a lot of the same design elements on the elevation as the rest of the building. One recommendation that staff made during the review process was to potentially incorporate residential units at the ground level, you know, like townhomes. The idea behind this suggestion was to try to match the uses on the west side of Indiana across the street, so you can have residential uses on one side and also on the other side of the street, so they can kind of interact better. This was also a substantial change in the design and was challenging for the applicant for cost purposes and also sort of from a structural perspective. These sites are not very deep, you know, between PCH and Indiana, so it's hard to make significant changes to the building envelope without affecting especially the parking structure that's inside. You know, those ramps need a lot of space in order to go up from one side to the other. So it was a challenge for the applicant.
Mr. Paul, while you're there, there are, there are no entrances, but are there still balconies that have been designed out? Is there something that has eyes on that street?
Yeah, there are balconies on that side of the building, yes, on all those sides that face streets. Moving on to the Fairfield Parking site, so here, the proposal involves a five-level parking structure with two hundred and fifteen parking spaces and thirty-two hundred square feet of commercial space. Access to this structure is from PCH and shared with the Fairfield Inn and Suites Hotel. And that will be convenient because this structure will primarily serve the parking needs of the Fairfield Inn and Suites. But it will serve as an overflow parking structure, as I mentioned earlier, for other uses in the specific plan area if needed. This is a colored elevation of the facade on PCH. The elevations, again, have a variety of materials and colors. The commercial storefronts, as you can see, have different styles, so they kind of avoid a monotonous appearance. This is a view of the same building from Mariposa Avenue, so the north side of the building. The commercial space windows wrap around PCH to Mariposa. The structure will be dressed up with climbing vines or similar material to liven it up from the street front. If you're familiar with the site today, the existing building has a very flat sort of wall, not so interesting along the sidewalk, and it's right up against the sidewalk. With the dedication of land that will be part of this development, there'll be some additional room to provide a narrow parkway with landscaping in front of the building, so that'll kind of soften up, provide a little distance from the street. Moving on to the PCC North part of the site, access to the site will be from Mariposa Avenue on the south and Palm Avenue on the north, and those access points lead to an access driveway and fire lane that basically leads to the parking structure entrance in the middle of this site. The six townhomes would have their own two-car garages, and they would take direct access off of that fire lane. Just mentioning again here that we considered and suggested the idea of publicly accessible courtyards along the PCH frontage during the review process. As with the PCC South site, you know, that is not part of the design that's before you. That was, again, challenging structurally and financially for the applicant. There is a condition, as I mentioned earlier, regarding kind of recessing as feasible some of the entries to the commercial storefronts. Also during the review process, we identified that concrete block wall along the fire lane, so that thick black line that you see right to the west of the fire lane is a block wall. It's actually set back fifteen feet away from the west property line, so that green strip that you see is still part of this property, but it's behind the perimeter wall, the block wall. So we thought this was another opportunity for an improvement, so we, staff suggested moving the wall west, the actual property line, to recapture that part of the property and potentially use as a landscape buffer or a pedestrian pathway. There is a condition of approval in your resolution of approval requiring additional landscaping on both sides of that block wall, which is still part of the design today. That way, that condition will help to improve the function of that area as a landscape buffer between the site and the tall buildings on the site and the neighbors to the west. This is an elevation of the same building from PCH. Again, the same comments regarding the architecture, very well-designed, a lot of changes in plan, a lot of different materials and colors, provide a lot of interest in the architecture. The proposed townhomes, we mentioned those earlier, and as I mentioned, each townhome as designed here takes access directly from that fire lane. One of the ideas we had for an improvement to the orientation or to the site plan was to perhaps reorient those, some of those townhomes, so the garages face sort of in a north-south direction like rural parking courts. And one of the benefits of that would be that you would gain some space and then potentially be able to extend that sidewalk that is along the side of that apartment building directly next to it, all the way from Mariposa to Palm Avenue. These are the elevations of the townhomes. The front elevation facing the fire lane has a lot of articulation, color and material variety, balconies, decks, trellises. Staff has added a condition of approval for this project, requiring submitted plans that incorporate some more of those features on the east elevation that faces the Carl's Jr. parking lot. Now, all of those conditions of approval that we've mentioned and were in your packet are intended to make improvements to the design without substantially altering the proposed structures or imposing a financial hardship on the project. Moving on from the site plan review application, just briefly gonna cover the dedication waivers and the requests. Just briefly explain where they are. So on Palm Avenue, the very north of the site, our general plan requires a twelve-foot dedication from the property, and the applicant is meeting that requirement, will be dedicating twelve feet. Along Indiana Street, there is a seven-foot required dedication, and the applicant is requesting a waiver of seven feet out of the seven feet for a big part of the Indiana frontage, because there are existing buildings on the property, so there's no way to provide a dedication there, the existing hotel buildings. And a three-foot waiver in front of the new buildings that are being proposed, so the PCC North, PCC South building, the residential mixed-use building, and the Fairfield parking structure, the new building, they will be providing a four-foot dedication along the Indiana Street frontage. So they're asking for a three-foot waiver in that case.
Paul, real quick, Paul, before you move on, the twelve-foot dedication on Palm Avenue, there's room there?
On the site, yes.
There is room, okay.
Yeah.
There's another building, isn't there a Carl's Jr. there?
Well, Carl's Jr. is not part of this property.
Right.
So there is no dedication required there because, you know, the applicant does not control that next-door property, though that would be-
You're just talking-
We're just talking about the property.
Right next to the townhomes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So moving on from Indiana Street to Mariposa, on the north side of Mariposa, there is a seven-foot requirement, and the applicant is meeting that requirement, providing a seven-foot dedication. On the south side of Mariposa, adjacent to the new Fairfield parking structure, there is a seven-foot requirement, and the applicant is requesting a three-foot waiver for the western portion, the portion that is sort of towards Indiana Street along Mariposa. And the reasoning is, you know, that the site is very constrained, it's very tight to try to squeeze in a parking structure there and then provide the ramping that is necessary, so it was very challenging for the applicant to meet the full dedication at that location. However, on the eastern side of Mariposa, the applicant is providing a dedication above the requirement that we have, so above the seven feet, approximately ten feet or perhaps more, to accommodate a new right-turn lane that will be going from eastbound Mariposa, turning right to southbound on PCH. So that dedication will effectively allow the creation of a right-turn pocket and will also allow the widening of those two existing lanes as they reach PCH.
And Paul, can you help explain that dedication? Does that mean the curb and gutter literally changes where they've dedicated and therefore the street changes shape in those places, or help us understand that?
Yeah, so along Mariposa, on the south side of Mariposa, there will be some changes to the street configuration there, especially with that right-turn pocket, yes. So things will move, the street will move south to accommodate that new right-turn pocket. Along Palm Avenue, for instance, that dedication is along a very narrow frontage and span of Palm Avenue, so there are no requirements to widen that little stretch of Palm Avenue today as part of this project. However, the city will obtain control of that frontage, twelve feet along that street, so when in the future, you know, if there's redevelopment at the Carl's Jr. facility, for instance, and the city can get dedications from that property, and as we get more dedications from other properties in the area, we can go in and widen the streets at some point.
Or widen the pedestrian easement, for example, if you chose to do that?
Or the, exactly, or the public sidewalk and parkway, yes. So along Holly Avenue, I believe, is where we have sort of a complete segment where there is a full dedication on the very south part of the site, so that's where there would be a little bit of widening along Holly Avenue and the provision of a wider sidewalk and parkway. So I hope that answers your question, Commissioner. Now, with regard to the dedication waivers, the request was reviewed by the Public Works Department. The Public Works Department believes that the findings of approval can be made, and they recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the city council, approval by the city council of these requested waivers. So moving on to the other entitlements, the development agreement, this is a quick summary of the development agreement document, but, so some of the benefits from this project. So we talked about what the applicant is requesting, and now this is what the applicant has agreed to provide in exchange for the rezoning and the other approvals. So thirty-two units of affordable housing, covenanted and restricted for fifty-five years, funding to set up a preferential parking zone if requested by the neighborhood, community meeting room space in one of those commercial buildings. If there are community nonprofits that need meeting space, they will be getting sort of first rights to reserve space in the community room. Additional public landscaping and seating areas along the Indiana Street, Holly Avenue, and PCH. Enhanced paving and entrances to the, and exits of the site. EV charging stations, more than the minimum requirements that are in the green building code, much more. So in addition to just having sixty-two EV-capable parking spaces, this development will actually provide fifty operable charging stations, and then make a hundred and fifty more parking spaces EV-capable. And in addition, providing solar panels on the buildings and onsite battery storage. Another request for entitlements or modifications is the existing entitlements for the project site, dealing with the two hotels onsite. Just a little background on that, in 2014, the property owner went through a major remodel of the two hotels, processed the subdivision to create separate parcels for the two hotels, the Aloft and the Fairfield. That project also included off-site parking covenants that tied the hotel parcels to the parking lot north of Mariposa, so that they could use the parking on that side. The project also included two separate CUP approvals for the alcohol service at each of the hotels. Now, due to the proposed project, the parcel configuration will change, so there'll be more parcels, different parcels. In addition, the parking lot north of Mariposa will be replaced by a new building. So the new subdivision application that's before you will basically replace the previous subdivision request, and then new parking covenants will be required to be approved between all the new parcels. So, but however, the hotel CUPs will remain for the alcohol service at each of the hotels. So the two additional resolutions in your packet, Resolution 2906 and 2907, retain the conditions of approval for the alcohol service at each of the hotels. The environmental assessment for the project, we have an environmental impact report before you for your consideration, along with mitigation monitoring plan and a statement of overriding This is kind of a description of the process of going through the drafting of the EIR, it's released to the public for comments, the responses that we received, that we provided to the public, and so on. And if, as Eduardo mentioned at the beginning, on December ninth, we received some additional comments on the EIR, so we took time to study them and provide responses, so we've updated the final EIR, and that's part of the packet that you received for the project. So in conclusion, we recommend that you adopt Resolution Number 2905, recommending the city council to certify the EIR and adopt along with it the mitigation and monitoring reports, the statement of overriding considerations, and approve the specific plan, and adopt Resolutions 2906 and 2907 recommending approval of the modifications to the CUPs for the two hotel sites. And that concludes our report. We'll be happy to take questions from the commission.
Thank you, Paul. If it's all right, I propose that we go right into public comments and then have our questions at the end of that, since we'll have a lot of comment. That way, we can hear everything from the applicant, hear what folks in town have to say, and then we'll hopefully ask better questions. So with that, let's go ahead and open public communication. As always, the first right will go to the applicant. Who do we have from the applicant presenting tonight? With that, let's go ahead and open public communication, as always, the first right will go to the applicant, who do we have uh, from the applicant presenting tonight?
Hi, this is Lionel Yuri with Marv Ventures, can you hear me?
Yes, Lionel, hi.
Hi, uh, thank you for having us, I'm gonna have Jake, uh, Douglas from our office here, we'll be running our PowerPoint presentation. Um, as I said, this is Lionel Yuri, I'm the Senior Vice President with Marv Ventures. And on behalf of Continental Development Corporation and BRE Hotels. Uh, we're very pleased to be before you today to present the Pacific Coast Commons Project. When we started this project, we laid out a, a, a vision for what it was that we wanted to do here. And the guiding vision was to provide responsible residential development for the city of El Segundo. Um, we're really looking to provide much-needed housing options, a mix of market rate and affordable units. And this is housing uh, for people that work in the community. Um, and are not homeowners in the community, but still interested in uh, participating. Are critical to the needs of uh, employees. And uh, we also thought it was the proper location in the city. Uh, along the eastern edge of the uh, current residential zoning in the city near PCH. Keeping uh, housing uh, close to PCH for minimizing the tra- traffic impacts. And also close to amenities like the Green Line Metro Station. While at the same time improving uh, Pacific Coast Highway, the entrance to the city, making it safer and cleaner and, and walkable. And giving uh, much more amenities to the area. Uh, as you know, housing is a, is a challenge in uh, Southern California and in El Segundo. Um, you know, the typical uh, home value right now is uh, north of one point seven million dollars. And El Segundo businesses and essential workers uh, need some options uh, for housing. That don't, uh, are, are necessitated on pur- purchasing uh, a, a, a home that they may not be able to afford. And a down payment that they may not be able to afford. So this is housing uh, for people that are gonna be living in the city, working in the city, already work in the city. And to provide uh, the employees, the businesses need, small businesses, large businesses alike. Um, when we were looking at the architecture for the project, you know, we know that this is a landmark project in the city. And we really wanted to provide a high quality of architectural design, a lot of articulation, high quality finishes, four-sided architecture. Just meaning that we're looking at all of the different sides, there's no backs. And make it something that's compatible with the community, it's modern, but fits in with the context of El Segundo and the PCH corridor. Uh, this is a rendering of the project, uh, this is from the southern end of the project, looking north towards LAX. Uh, you can see the mix in architectural finishes, the uh, articulation, uh, the different massing. And then also the kind of activation that we're looking for on uh, along PCH. And all within the context of the existing building and the hotels. And this is a view from the very northern end of the uh, project, looking south. And you can see the same style of uh, architecture and um, uh, attention to detail and design, balconies. And uh, different materiality. Uh, the staff did an excellent job of, of presenting the overall project and uh. You know, here we got our, uh, three different project sites that they cover, Pacific Coast Commons South. Uh, the Fairfield uh, parking structure and uh, the Pacific Commons North with our apartments and studios. When we set out to do this project, uh, we wanted to hear from the community. Uh, different uh, views within the community. And we had a lot of community meetings to kind of give feedback on what we could do to make the project better. Um, some of the things that we learned in those and some of the things that we uh, strive to incorporate into the project. Um, we are constructing a new right lane turn, uh, right turn lane on Mariposa, which will uh, dramatically increase, uh, help to increase the traffic flow. Uh, affordable housing, uh, we heard uh, was a big need, we originally proposed. When we came into the project in the city around five percent and have ended up at twelve percent of, you know, more than doubled back. To thirty-two units and increasing the number of low and very uh, low income units. Uh, we added a nonprofit group space on the ground floor of PCH in the Fairfield Parking Structure, and we'll talk more about that in a moment. But it's a space that we heard that a lot of nonprofits, uh, youth sports organizations, charitable organizations. Needed to uh, meet. We're also, uh, as was mentioned, covering the cost for residential parking district, uh, if requested by the residents. Uh, for resident parking only, increased landscape and worked heavily on agreed initiatives. Um, so the new right turn lane on Mariposa, um, right now, there's only two lanes uh, headed east. So if one car wants to go straight through uh, on Mariposa and cross PCH. All the cars that wanna go south on PCH, which is a substantial, you know, number. Uh, cannot make that right turn on red and they're uh, stuck, uh, causing more congestion. And with our uh, proposed right turn lane, uh, we're gonna add that as a dedicated right turn lane. So now there'll be three lanes at the intersection, allowing cars to make that movement and to uh, uh, reduce the queuing on Mariposa. Uh, affordable housing, um, as we mentioned, we're doing twelve percent of the apartments, thirty-two units to be uh, affordable housing. Uh, one of the key points we'd like to address is this is not homeless housing or free housing. It's housing for people like teachers, first responders, civic workers, uh, that need a subsidy. To be able to afford to live in El Segundo. Um, you can see uh, in the low income limit qualifications there. If you're, for instance, a teacher and you're making less than uh, sixty-six thousand a year. You could qualify for a studio, low income unit, if you make less than seventy-one, you could qualify for a one bedroom. Less than eighty-five, you could qualify for a two bedroom. And another thing that's important to note is that these units are not gonna be distinguishable in any way from the market rate units. They'll be the same kind of units, they're gonna be scattered throughout the project, uh, through each building. Um, so they're gonna be seamlessly integrated with the market rate units.
Uh, I'm sorry, Lionel, can I ask a question on that? Did you guys work with um, many mansions to determine the mix of uh, studio versus uh, one and two bedroom?
Yeah, we, we worked closely uh, with city staff who had many mansions involved. Uh, on their side, uh, heavily with the affordable housing component. So, so we did uh, talk with them through uh, through the city process.
Gotcha, so, so there was a recommendation to have a higher percentage of studios versus uh, more family um, options?
Um, I would say that the mix of the different uh, studios versus one versus two. Um, is a function of balancing the number of affordable units. Versus the uh, number of, uh, versus uh, bedrooms. So a two-bedroom affordable unit would require a much larger subsidy than a studio. So you end up, if you, for instance, did all two bedrooms, you would have substantially less uh, affordable housing units than if you did all studios.
Understood, thanks.
Um, so the community space that we touched on is gonna be on the ground floor of um, the Fairfield Parking Structure. And it is, you know, for the nonprofits like we discussed, El Segundo nonprofits will have priority. Chamber of Commerce, Sports League, Little League, AYSO, uh, charities. Uh, we can drill down on the space here, it's approximately twelve hundred and sixty-four square feet. We consulted with these groups and the result was that what they really needed was kind of open flex space. Uh, where they could do um, uh, you know, board meetings, Little League sign-ups, fundraisers, pop locks. Uh, so we have storage camp, uh, storage cabinets, uh, projectors, uh, one office for kind of administration. And then restrooms and storage uh, for chairs and, and other items. And so uh, they, if you're a nonprofit in the city of El Segundo, you'll be able to use this space uh, free of charge. Um, the other uh, thing we touched on was the uh, permit parking district. So this is something that the residents initiate in the city of El Segundo, and there's a precedent for it uh, elsewhere in Smokey Hollow. And, you know, if it's something the residents want, we've uh, we've agreed to provide a twenty-five thousand dollar payment to implement. The um, the resident-only parking districts on uh, streets that are uh, adjacent to the project. Uh, and then our green initiatives, uh, you know, we have rooftop solar panels, uh, a lot of landscaping, net increase of sixty trees. Uh, new bike racks, a lot, uh, a, a lot of bike racks and uh. Much more EV spaces and capable spaces than was required by code, a total of, a total of fifty installed ones. And a hundred fifty EV capable ones, and that means the EV capable, and we put in all the infrastructure there into those parking spaces. So all that needs to happen, if there's the demand, is you put the uh, charging unit on top and all of the uh, you know, electrical and all of the other infrastructure is ready to go. Um, one thing we wanted to point out is that the city, uh, you know, did undergo an independent financial review with Kaiser Marston. Um, you know, one of the, the, the nation's largest and most respected uh, auditors, they did a detailed review for eight months. And, you know, the conclusion is that affordable housing, providing affordable housing in Southern California. And uh, you know, in the beach cities is tough. Uh, they looked at our proposal, uh, when we were at ten percent affordable housing, uh, with less, with, with more studios. Uh, and no community space, and, you know, they found it feasible, but it, it was problematic financially. Uh, we still, um, you know, with the city, you know, agreed that the best solution was to. Provide twelve percent affordable housing, um, increase the number of uh, uh, decrease the number of studios. And increase the number of one bedrooms and uh, two bedrooms and uh, you know, put in the community's room. And this is just to say that this project, um. Had, had different things that we would have liked or staff would have liked to implement. Um, but it was a delicate balancing act of providing everything that we thought would make a, a great project. Between uh, the great architecture, the amount of affordable housing, um, you know, and, and all the different amenities. So uh, we, we, we thought that, uh, ourselves and staff thought that it was uh, the right balance uh, of all of these things. And uh, we hope that, that you might uh, reach the same conclusion. Uh, thank you very much, and uh, with that, I will turn it back over.
All right, thank you for that presentation, uh, anyone else uh, presenting on behalf of the applicant tonight? Just Lionel? Okay.
We, we have consultants available to answer questions as well.
I appreciate that, okay, let's uh, we can go back to the ready bunch screen, let's open it up for other members of the public who wanna make comment on this. We have some hands being raised, um, okay, let's start with Mr. Paul Morrison. Mr. Morrison, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Paul Morrison here, um, I had my hand up earlier, you could barely hear Paul Samaris's presentation. There were times when it was actually an audible, and there was no way to communicate that information to you, so that was unfortunate. I've been able to hear everyone else just fine. Um, I'm just going to bring up one thing, and it was the last letter that I received, and it's about the waivers for the parking. And um, it goes into the first criteria, and they're talking about um, Indiana Street. And it says Indiana Street will maintain a thirty-four foot roadway width, which meets the required twenty-six foot clear width needed. And I wondered if twenty-six feet was a typo, I don't see twenty-six feet uh, referenced anywhere else in the documents. And the um, the uh, the safe roadway width, as determined by the fire chief, is uh, thirty-six feet. So I was wondering, with the dedications that are going to be uh, put in place. Will Indiana be widened to a thirty-six foot wide street? That makes it uh, possible for emergency vehicles to safely uh, uh, access the roadway?
Uh, Mr. Morrison, I'll write your question down, at the end of public communication, I'll ask your question to staff, all right?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, next we have, uh, it looks like Matthew has his hand raised, go ahead, Matthew.
Sorry, I wasn't prepared there, um, so uh, I just have a few comments, one is to what the Lionel.
Can you tell us your name, Matthew, and where you live, we just know you as Matthew.
Alright, um, Matthew Clamp and I live, uh, closest intersection is Mariposa and um, Washington, in El Segundo.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so um, yeah, I just wanted to um, mention one thing for Lionel, from Lionel's presentation and Paul's, and then I just had some general comments. Um, Lionel had presented uh, the residential parking permit. And during a Zoom meeting that we, he held uh, back on March thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one. Um, I just noticed one omission, cause we had talked about, uh, or he had talked about, the group had talked about having Washington. Um, between Mariposa and Palm, part of that residential parking permit, so that's just uh, one omission I had seen on there, I'm not sure what had happened to that. And the other um, thing I was gonna mention about the right turn lane, Paul mentioned it, so did Lionel, the right turn lane on Mariposa. Um, from what I saw, it's really only a pocket, so it's maybe a fifty-foot section, so it does very little to relieve congestion, especially during rush hour. Because the back, I mean, you're gonna get like maybe six vehicles in that pocket of a lane, so. Once that um, sixth vehicle, is, is the seventh vehicle is either going straight or intending to go left and can't quite get there yet. All the other one hundred cars behind there, that back up to Kansas Street or further uh, west. I mean, the, the right-hand turn doesn't relieve that congestion, so that's a little nuanced, devil's always in the details, so um. Unless I, 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 I saw that incorrectly, but that right turn lane is only a pocket, it doesn't go all the way west. Um, to um, to Washington Street or something like that. And the other thing I'll mention to, when Paul had, um, Samaris, Mr. Samaris had mentioned. Uh, he was talking about the parking study and um, that uh, the unused space um, across from the old Hacienda. Um, that study was done, and they admitted it was done during the pandemic, so any data during that time. It's, was completely, the, the data is completely suppressed, the nu- number of vehicles that were in there. Um, was, you know, just a drop in the bucket compared to what you normally would have in there. Um, so that was one observation I had uh, noted. And then the um, the demand study as far as transportation seems that it hinges largely upon people walking to transit. And to downtown, and, and I just, I, it'd be great if that would happen, but that just isn't the reality in Southern California, it just, it still hasn't. And um, and I live in the area and I, I walk the routes, and I just, I don't see people even walking one or two blocks to Ralph's. So how are they gonna walk, how do they manage to be now gonna walk, just cause we build this and we put it on paper, people aren't gonna magically walk? Six blocks of mass, mass transit and, you know, twenty blocks of downtown, I, I just, I think it's a, a, a admirable, you know, it's aspirational. But I, I just don't see that being uh, reality. Um, so I, another question I would have about that, if we really wanted to get a good feel for it, it's like. Why wouldn't a survey constructed of the local residents in the area to ask them, well, how often do you walk? And to what distance and to what destinations do you walk, take a survey of the, the immediate area, that would give you the answer to the question. So I'm just kinda um, wondering about the methodology, how they come up with the information to draw conclusions and ultimately make a recommendation of projects that can be so impactful. And just on to my um, general comments about the project in general, I, I think the bottom line is the concern for myself and others out there in the area. That the project has a high potential to negatively impact the community's quality of life, the property value, and it, it just feels kind of like an attack on a single-family neighborhood. If it wasn't such a high-density um, project, it wouldn't, I guess, be as alarming. And I, I guess, the concerns are increased traffic, um, uh, decreased parking, increased noise. Uh, the significant, high-density population growth. Um, you get a substantial amount of activity and energy concentrated in a smaller area. And all the uh, you know, the negative effects that go along with that. Um, and um, that just kind of all equates maybe a lower qual- not maybe, but it does equate to a lower quality of life for the people living in the area. And Lionel, um, kudos to him, he did have a, you know, uh, engage the public. But on March thirty-first, um, he admitted himself last year that there is gonna be, they are gonna disturb, this was a quote. PCC is being built in this location so as not to disturb, you know, uh, you know, part of the El Segundo population. So my question is, so what about the population that is being disturbed, what's being done for them? If the housing was uh, spread out to various other locations in El Segundo or moved east of PCH. of PCH, um, or in Smoky Hollow, this, you know, quote-unquote disturbed weight kinda gets spread across a broader segment, uh, you know, of our city. And, you know, if a large, uh, contributing factor for this proposal is a state requirement, then I think we should spread out. We have like ninety-nine percent of our population lives in, um, less than twenty-five percent of the city limits. Why should we exacerbate some of the issues and create negative impacts for the population when you can achieve the same goal by building east of PCH, which would solve or avoids most of the negatives and puts those new residents closer to the transit, which is one of the primary goals? And all my arguments, they're the same argument that the city of El Segundo has had for decades, um, towards LAX and most precisely, most precisely, um, towards the, uh, most recent LAX expansion. And, um, what I'm gonna quote here is from the El Segundo City Manager, um, sent out an email dated Wednesday, March seventeenth of twenty-twenty-one, and the subject line is "The City of El Segundo submits a comment letter opposing LAX expansion project." So when I read this, the arguments made by the city of El Segundo's email, as well as the one-hundred-plus-page official comment that they made to LAX are precisely the exact same, in some cases verbatim, of what mine is towards Pacific Coast Common proposal. When I was reading through this, I couldn't help but smile, and I was like, okay, this is the exact same thought process and objections towards LAX as I have and numerous others have towards the Pacific Coast Comments. I guess the only thing I, I, I ask is that when you receive comments from others, when you receive mine, I just, please keep in mind that the very points that were brought up by the El Segundo City Manager in an email and a comment letter to, um, Evelyn Quintanilla at Lawa, um, those points were, they were concerned or objected to, the city of El Segundo objected to expansion, the location of expansion, congestion, noise, traffic, and things happening in our backyard. And those six points are the exact same points I have about the Pacific Coast Comments. So it kinda seems like, well, why aren't these same standards being applied to this project? It seems to be kinda like a, a double standard. It's okay for City of El Segundo or whomever to expand to better serve the housing needs of the public, but why isn't it not for LAX to serve the transportation needs of all of Southern California? Um, if the argument is of a housing proposal is the betterment of the population, then LAX should be able to expand their footprint to the south, increase the number of gates at LAX, you know, cancel all the accommodations they've made for the city of El Segundo. They, they have their over-ocean operations that take place at about twenty-three-hundred every night, they have preferential runway use, they, um, we should lift the numerous aircraft activity restrictions on the south side of the airport, cancel the noise curfew, uh, cancel the residential sound insulation program. And you got, uh, airlines like American, United, Delta, and, uh, the executive directors, uh, Ed Bastian from Delta, uh, Doug Parker from, um, American, I forget United's, they said if today, if they could add a hundred flights a day each one of them, they would to LAX. So, um, that's all a direct quote from a management meeting in, with Lawa, I, I worked with Lawa. And so all these items I just stated would be better for the entire population of Southern California. So LAX could better serve the, uh, transportation needs of Southern California much better. Um, so that's the same, it's, it's the same argument. So everyone who's, I think, that's opposing LAX expansion should be thinking, well, they should be opposing Pacific Coast Comments, because they're both kind of the same intellectual arguments. Um, that, that's all I have. I, I thank you for your time and allowing me to, to add my comments.
Thank you for taking your time to share your thoughts. I appreciate it. Uh, can we hear from Mr. Brian Washam, please? Mr. Washam?
Yes, uh, good evening. This is Byron Washam. I'm a resident at, uh, sixteen-twenty-eight East Palm Avenue, and I've previously attended many of the public meetings for Pacific Coast Commons, particularly the north, and I would like to, uh, re-raise some of those, uh, issues here. This project, uh, will generate about twenty-five-hundred daily trips, of which seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight will be generated from Pacific Commons North. One of my concerns is the adjoining, uh, Palm Avenue, which is, uh, to the north of, uh, of this project. Uh, specifically, it's a very narrow, uh, area. At the present time, only two vehicles, uh, um, it's only one way for two vehicles to pass at the same time. And, uh, basically, this is tantamount to multiple games of chicken on an hourly basis up and down, uh, Palm Avenue. And to add this volume of traffic without any mitigating measures or improvements of a street that's only thirty-two feet wide and should be thirty-six feet wide, I maintain that, uh, there needs to be an improvement before we put all of this, uh, additional traffic on it, and Palm should be no less than the minimums, uh, width that you, you were requiring on, uh, Mariposa and Indiana. Furthermore, the environmental impact statement says that there's four steady intersections that currently operate at an LOS of E or worse during the AM and P periods and are projected to continue to operate at LOS E or worse during those periods. Specifically, Palm Avenue with PCH is an LOS of F. This is the same assessment made by the ERR for future plus project, uh, future, the future plus project traffic conditions. So there is no question as to the problems with Palm Avenue. Based upon the lack of community benefits of putting a portion of the seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight daily trips, uh, from PCC North onto East Palm Avenue, I encourage the planning commission to not approve the final ER at this time until these conditions have been, uh, improved, because at the present, I do not regard the following as a true statement, that the proposed project has a completed circulation analysis using an LOS methodology that indicates that the trips generated by the proposed project would not result in adverse circulation conditions, because the impacts related to the project access points and circulation are site-specific and would be less than significant. The project would not contribute to cumulative impacts with respect to hazardous design features. I cannot subscribe to that position whatsoever. As a case in point, Carl's Jr. has a right turn lane only onto Palm, but PPC North does not. So they encourage their traffic to travel both west and eastbound as they exit the project. The, uh, presentation today by Mr. Samaris was overlooked by the applicant, is they are asking a blind faith subscription by this planning commission to subscribe to the ESMC of a twenty-five percent lower parking requirement. That has the potential consequences of any over-demand that is created during the life of this project, call it fifty years, will move on to the streets of Palm, Washington, Mariposa, and Indiana. And I will, for one, would like to hear a very thorough discussion by the planning commissioners as to whether or not they subscribe to this approach to lower the required parking requ, uh, requirements by twenty-five percent. My final point is this, and two commissioners have already raised it for me already, but the applicant proposed a twelve percent offer of dedication upon their very small strip of land on Palm. That cannot be considered as a future viable, feasible option to improve the conditions on Palm. You would need to have co-subscription by Carl's Jr. owner, that property owner, and all the property owners on the south, on the south side of Palm in order for anything to be considered. I had to raise the issue with the applicant. The applicant has not raised it with other property owners along, uh, south of Palm. So to put this in, I, I see it as merely a red herring, uh, to try and solve it. So now, I thank you for your considerations of these comments, and I encourage you not to approve the ERR until the issues of Palm Avenue are addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your comments and for your time this evening. Okay, can we hear from Amelia Bowley, please?
Hi, um, good evening Chair Baldino and members of the planning commission. My name is Amalia Bolifuentes. I'm with Lozo Drury LLP, here on behalf of Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility. We request that the planning commission refrain from recommending certification of the FEIR or recommending approval of the project until staff addresses the project's potentially significant adverse environmental impacts. We filed written comment earlier today by email, and in our previous comments to the planning commission in December, we included the comment of certified industrial hygienist Bud Offerman, who found significant potential health risk impacts from indoor air quality. The city's response to this comment stated that compliance with California Air Resource Board or CARB standards would render this impact less than significant, but Mr. Offerman had assumed CARB compliance in his assessment. Therefore, there is still a potential for significant health risk impacts, which should be addressed in a revised environmental impact report. Next, in its FEIR, the city added three related projects to its cumulative impacts analysis. This is significant new information that the public must be given an opportunity to review and comment on through formal recirculation. And lastly, the FEIR fails to properly account for the project's growth-inducing impacts. The DEIR relied on census data from twenty-ten to conclude that anticipated growth would not be substantial, but twenty-twenty census data, which is now available for the city of El Segundo, shows that the estimates used in the DEIR are well below actual population numbers. Population growth that is expected from the project therefore constitutes unplanned growth, which must be disclosed and analyzed in a revised EIR. For these reasons, we request that the planning commission not recommend certification of the FEIR nor approval of the project until these impacts are adequately addressed. Thank you very much.
Can I ask if you're being compensated fifty dollars or more to make these comments tonight?
Uh, I am, I don't think I can speak to that. Um, I would definitely defer to, um, my supervising attorneys at my firm before, um...
And your client is?
Before we let it come down to that, I'm sorry.
Who is your client?
Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility.
Safer?
Correct.
Okay, is that a, uh, a nonprofit formed by union representatives?
It is a nonprofit, uh, with members who live and work in the community of El Segundo.
Do they have a connection with unions?
Um, I do not believe I am, I, I can speak to that. Um, I could definitely get back to you and, and speak to my supervising attorneys.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Let's hear from Mr. Rafa Pimental again, please.
Good evening again, uh, Chairman Baldino and, uh, the rest of the planning committee. Um, we have spoken on this project in the past. Um, you are well aware of what our position is, and we were gonna, uh, we are going to reiterate our position again. Uh, we're asking that you not approve this project going forward, uh, that you not approve the, uh, EIR as well, uh, based on the letters, uh, that we submitted to you earlier this year. And we ask, uh, again, that you would consider, uh, to include, uh, that this project, if, uh, maybe one day does get to that point where it is approval, maybe today is the day, that we ask that you include that, uh, this project be built by a skilled and trained workforce and that like local hire requirements be, uh, yeah, uh, implemented in, in that statement in order for this project to be built. Uh, that is our position, um, and we thank you for your time, and have a nice evening.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, let's hear from Claudia Windman.
Hi, it's Claudia Weedman.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Dr. Claudia Weedman, and I've been an educator for over twenty-five years and currently work at USC School of Education. But I speak to you today as a, a longtime educator and in fact, a former resident of El Segundo. Um, I lived on Whiting Street and Grand, um, and continue to regularly visit, uh, and shop in the city. I am also a proud parent of a former student of El Segundo schools. My daughter Lucia loved her teachers very much and recalls Mr. Rabbi, Mr. Luna, Mr. Long with fond memories. I want to share with you some thoughts about the critical importance of affordable housing, um, especially as it relates to educators, um, who educate our children. Teachers are at the heart of a school and a community. Our students learn and develop because of the work they do, the care they demonstrate, and the commitment that they have to their students and the families. What is also true is that living and working in the same city is often absolutely unattainable for many teachers, and that has impact on everyone, including our children, um, uh, when teachers have long commutes, um, that add to incredible stressors that they deal with every day. Further, teachers, um, earn about twenty percent less than their similarly skilled workers. And for those teachers able to make the sacrifice to live and work in the city, that ability is becoming less possible as well. A story just today in the Daily Breeze reported that, uh, apartment vacancies are at a twenty-two-year low, and while rent continues to go up, you know, there we are, it's a huge problem. And the result, well, among other factors, um, you know, fifty percent of teachers leave the profession because of the stressors, including long commutes. And they do so within the first five years, we know that very clearly, the, the data show that. This turnover, uh, you know, means our students, uh, are impacted, right? And they, and they pay dearly across academic and social emotional measures. The data is very clear on that as well. This turnover also means we have teacher shortages, um, and that in particular has a serious impact on student achievement, when, and we know that those shortages, uh, continue to, to rise. Therefore, I hope you, the commission, recognize the positive impact affordable housing will have on the education ecosystem of El Segundo. How remarkable it would be to have teachers like Mr. Rabbi, Mr. Luna, and Mr. Long live and work in El Segundo. Imagine the impact on their teaching and on our students if that were possible. So I leave you with that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, uh, oh, it was Michael Early, Mr. Early. I thought I saw you up there. Let's hear your comments, sir.
Good evening, and thank you to the planning commission for letting me talk today. Um, for twenty years, El Segundo has not allowed any real building of, of any size in this town, that we continue to look outside to bring jobs and to bring development in. They're building, um, that building up, you know, up by the, you know, the side, fifty-thousand, five-hundred-thousand square feet of offices with no housing on, on a location. We're not providing housing for anybody, and homelessness isn't the problem, it's, it's the result of a problem of no housing. And as, as the last speaker so eloquently put, our teachers don't have anywhere to live, our people who live in town, our firemen, our policemen, all come far away, they can't afford to live here. The area, you know, the first speaker's talked about, no one walks in that area. They go to Ralphs and that's it, because there's nowhere to go. It's a wasteland along that road, and it's really a sin. If you go down to El Segundo or Hermosa, they all have great businesses along that corridor, and we have nothing. We've got a strong wasteland of a hotel, and we get occasionally people walk back and forth in the hotel and they're lost. Like putting in restaurants along there or business along there and bringing in hundreds of people to live there, it will make that area very busy, and it is important to put it on the edge of town so it's not flooding into all of the town, and it will affect not only a few people, I mean, a few streets there, but, you know, it can't always be not my backyard. You know, I would love to see building across the street, you know, on the other side of, of PCH, but it's not gonna happen for a while, and this is a great plan. I met with these guys a couple times, um, in my different roles, uh, around town, um, with charity groups. I did meet with them a couple times with community room, and we came in and they had one community room, we walked out, we had what we wanted, we talked to them and said, this is what will work for us. I mean, there's even a, uh, a door to the parking lot so the handicapped can have a direct access from spaces next to the door. So they've thought about the community, they've thought about how they can help the community. And this community really needs to have housing. Twelve percent of our needed housing is, is a good, twelve percent of the project being needed housing is, is a great move. I think we have six hundred houses we have to build in the next few years, and if you don't allow people like these guys to build these kind of large-scale projects, you're never gonna hit that number. And then what's gonna happen is, you know, the state came along a couple of years ago and made ADU, everyone said it'll never happen. And all of a sudden now, ADUs are allowed in every single property, and you can't stop them. There's a building, there's a building plan, you cannot stop them, there's no longer any R1. Now, every property with, with SB nine and ten can be divided in half, you can put a poor house on a lot. If you don't approve these kinds of things in this kind of an area, the state's gonna come along in two or three years, and they're gonna say, you know what, you can build a big building anywhere you want, and you're not gonna be able to stop them. They're gonna build big buildings in the middle of Mariposa, and they're not gonna have room for the fire department to get through, not gonna have any good sewer system to hold the waste, not gonna... not going to have any good sewer system to hold the waste, not going to have water systems to bring the water or power. We need to build these big projects along quarters that can afford to handle the load. And also, these people are going to come and go on the, on the, uh, Sepulveda again, the freeway, come and go to work. It's a great location for this. You know, the better location, as Matthew said, is out by the green line, but right now you're not going to approve that. You know, and this is a, a job, they've done a great job, they've taken the community interest into everything they've done and they've come back time and time. They've come to different groups that I've, I, that I'm involved in, they speak to our groups and listen to our groups and go back and then come back with answers to our questions and, and changes to what we need and what we want. The example of the community room is a great space. You can even, they're putting it in a location where we can have it catered from the restaurant and the hotel if we want to have a meeting. So they're covered a lot of needs and the, the community people in this town need it. We have the park district, but that doesn't handle enough of what we need for other groups. Like, I really hope that you guys give these guys the permission to go forward and do this because I think it's a great thing for our community. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Early. And, uh, thank you for always sharing your wonderful photographs of our city, I appreciate that. Okay, let's hear from Mike Rotolo's iPhone, please.
Hello, uh, Chairman, uh, thank you for taking the time. Um, I just wanted to speak in favor of the project as a former planning commissioner and was involved in the housing element, uh, discussions back in two thousand and six, seven, around that time. I know what you're up against with the, uh, requirements that the state's putting on us. Um, I believe this is a perfect project for El Segundo. It's, it's where we need it and it's what we need. Serves a woman of folks who right now can't afford to be in our town. Um, after listening to the development operations, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the city, uh, this is exactly the CEOs and the, and the people on that committee are...
Oh, I think we lost, we lost Mr. Rotolo. Uh, Mike, if you can hear us, please try calling back and, uh, hopefully get your comments in. But right now, let's hear from Marcia Hansen, please.
Oops. Good evening to our...
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, Mike, hold on, let's talk to Marcia and then we'll come back to you.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, go ahead, Marcia.
Thank you, uh, good evening to our planning commission. Um, I'm Marcia Hansen, tonight I'm here on behalf of the El Segundo Chamber of Commerce in support of the proposed Pacific Coast Commons. The project will have a positive impact on our business community, um, which will be beneficial to our entire city. Um, as a city, El Segundo continues our growth, ideas keep ticking off, which is amazing. Um, providing housing for our current and future residents is of the utmost importance, as we all know. Additional housing closer to employment centers not only reduces traffic, um, and congestion, but also, uh, provides a better quality of life for our employees. Um, in addition, these residents are going to shop and dine and play and volunteer in our community, um, contributing to our overall financial and well-being of, of El Segundo. And isn't that what we want as, as a fellow, uh, community? Uh, the proposed community space that Michael spoke about, um, will provide a much-needed, um, meeting space and event space for our local nonprofits. And it's going to be a wonderful benefit from our littlest of, of, uh, residents or most senior residents, offering a place to meet and gather, um, for these groups who then get back to our community and what a win-win that is. Um, uh, Michael also mentioned that the developers met with many community volunteers and, and leaders, um, regarding the space and they took all of our suggestions, um, in and created a wonderful space that'll be very useful for everyone and help us continue to do our outreach to, uh, the community. Um, in, in addition, the Pacific Coast Commons beautifies such a highly visible area of El Segundo. Many people, they walk into the chamber office, they say, gosh, we've never been on Main Street. You can bet they're going down PCH a lot. Um, and so it's so important to beautify that area and really show off how special our town is. Um, and as well, as we've all mentioned, it contributes to our state mandated housing goals, which is so important. Um, the developers of this project have, have really proven their commitment to El Segundo with community involvement, as well as projects, many projects that have added to the desirability of, of El Segundo for many, many years. So, um, on behalf of the El Segundo Chamber of Commerce, please accept our endorsement of Pacific Coast Commons. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marcia, for your comments. Okay, can we go back to Mike Rotolo, are you there, Mike?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, I, I don't know where I dropped, not dropped off, but, uh, you know, when I was on planning commission back in two thousand and six, uh, I, I know what you're facing with housing element, the state, uh, the state's requirements. And I think this, this fits what our needs are. Uh, the Economic Development Corporation expressed the city council meeting recently their need, uh, to, to encourage and provide for housing for, uh, workforce that, that our business community needs. Um, I think the location is great, it's on the side of Sepulveda where property taxes are going to go towards our schools. Uh, it provides for affordability, um, as a president of nonprofits in El Segundo, I face... Um, and I, I think this is what we need and it's where we need it. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your comments, Mr. Rotolo. Uh, can we hear, oh, Maria Barton?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Barton, go ahead.
Okay, I'm a little frustrated and disheartened to hear that, uh, you had told us that you don't want residents near Smoky Hollow, but for some reason it seems to be okay to be on, uh, PCH where I happen to live. Um, you seem to think that it's okay to have two hundred and sixty-three homes in this one little area, homes and apartments. Um, and also, uh, you mentioned that there would be about seven hundred and ninety parking spots and I calculated there would probably be over a thousand new residents, which means that it would be about, uh, one point three parking spaces for each unit or home or apartment. That means that they're going to be parking on Palm, they're going to be parking on Washington, they're going to park on Mariposa, they're going to park all over the place. So I want to know what you're going to do for the ones that live near there. Because I can guarantee you Lionel and Marcia and Michael and the presenter of the slides probably don't live anywhere near this place where this is happening on Pacific Commons. Because that's who you need to speak to. Why can't we diversify the area? Claudia, I totally agree with her. Teachers, very, very important. Low-income housing, yes, it's mandated, but I agree we need to have it. We need to have space for those people. But why does it have to be all in one congested area? Let's diversify it. Smoky Hollow doesn't want it. No, the people and the residents don't want it near Smoky Hollow. It's, it's okay on PCH, no. You talk about beautifying, like Marcia just mentioned, the area. What about Stickenstein, it's been there, I've been here for twenty-seven years. That is an eye frickin' sore. What about the Boeing building across the street? That is an eyesore, that is not welcoming at all. Yes, I think it would look great, but you're going to have a lot of traffic. I don't believe that this project, I think it violates the state planting and zoning law, uh, for the city's general plan. Not only that, all the construction, what do you want to do for us? Because the EIR report, we're going to have all that emission, greenhouse emission. I work from home, it's hot, I have my windows open, I have Zoom meetings and I can't listen because there's construction all day long going on for I don't know how many months that construction is going to happen. Are you going to put me up in a residence somewhere so I can work in a place, somewhere maybe in Smoky Hollow? And with the twelve-feet dedication plan for Palm, I don't know where you expect to get that. Is it twelve feet already or you think that you can go ahead and take extra sidewalks from my property? I, I still don't understand that. So, uh, yes, it sounds wonderful, it sounds great for people that are not around here, but for those that are living in this area, there needs to be something done if this should go through for the people that are living here. You either provide options for us to be able to live somewhere else while the construction is being done because we do not want to smell all that emissions, all that cancer-causing emissions that is going on, all the construction, all the noise, all the traffic, et cetera. And parking, we need to have parking permits or we need dedicated parking for all the residents that are in the area just on Palm. Because this is going to be a mad frickin' house. I have no idea why you have to put two hundred and sixty-three, you knew, you knew it in one little area to appease so you don't get fined for the city of El Segundo, which is ridiculous.
All right, thank you, Ms. Barton. And can we hear from Nino Mascollo?
Yes, sir, uh, my name is Nino Mascollo and I own a condominium on Palm Street. I had provided some oral comments during the, uh, the last meeting and I was going through the staff response to those and, uh, I had asked about water quantity and supply and, uh, they thought I said water quality. So their response wasn't, uh, on point with regard to that. Uh, with regard to water quality or quantity, they did mention that we have a will-serv letter from the city, which is, is nice and that the city relies on the urban water management plan to address a lack of water. And while there is a plan for addressing that type of a situation, it still doesn't address how much incremental water use are we going to have through the PCC project? Uh, and this is a citywide issue, this is not, not in my backyard because I'm a resident on Palm Street. This is for the whole city. Uh, I am fairly confident that the, the applicant would not say, well, since we're the last one in, you can take water away from us first, uh, if there's any type of a rationing that has to go forward. Now, that, that's going to take place through all residents. So I, I think it serves the city well to make sure that we understand what the incremental increase is of all developments and that we have a good plan to address that, that doesn't impact, uh, those of us who are currently relying on the existing water supply, which might be cut in the near future. Uh, we've also addressed parking, uh, a number of times. I wanted to talk a little bit about it because to me it doesn't appear that the plan addresses the need for parking of hotel employees. It talks about the number of rooms, the occupancy of the hotel, uh, but it doesn't mention how many employees are going to be there. And let's assume that each employee is going to bring his or her car, or maybe it's ninety percent. Uh, the staff noted that in the EIR, it talks about how five percent of the project trips will be by, uh, walking, public transportation, things like that. So I was assuming you could then make a calculation that ninety-five percent of the employees at all of the hotels and the other commercial and retail outlets and the development would be bringing their vehicles. And if that's the case, it's not clear to me that the parking analysis figured that in. It looked like it addressed residents and it looked like it addressed the guests at the hotels, but not, uh, employees that would be working at these facilities. In addition to that, uh, while the Fair Press parking analysis came up with a calculation that you don't need as much as the municipal code requires, a- as Maria expressed the concern, what if that's wrong? Uh, we're all going to wind up suffering for it. I think that we should be requiring what the municipal code requires, not providing any type of an exception, uh, to that based upon, as, uh, one of the other, uh, Matthews said, a hope and a wish that we're going to get more people walking. Uh, maybe we will, but right now it doesn't appear that that's the case. It reminds me of that refrain from a, a pop song back in the eighties, nobody walks in LA. And in some instances of downtown LA, in a few places, that's an exception to the rule. But for right now, that's generally not the case. So I would suggest that we require, uh, the full municipal code parking requirements for the project. Uh, finally, I, I want to thank the applicant, uh, and probably staff for coming up with a proposal that the applicant would propose, prepare to pay twenty-five thousand dollars towards a parking permit district if the residents required it. Wh- what I would suggest is that the applicant be required to pay for whatever it takes to obtain and create a parking permit district. I, I have no idea if twenty-five thousand is twice the amount that it would normally cost or a quarter of the amount that it would normally cost. If consultants are required to do this, that's not something that the, the residents are likely to be able to afford on their own. And because it's an impact that would be caused by the project, the applicant should be responsible for addressing that impact. And, and while, uh, staff points out that parking isn't specifically identified as a environmental impact under SEQA, it's still a project impact and the council and the commissioners have the ability to require the applicant to im- mitigate that particular impact caused by the project if it does arise. Uh, a- and then, a- as I'm sure you're all aware, you've just listened to a variety of public comments. Uh, trying to get all of the residents in the area that are impacted by parking to agree to form a parking permit district could be a little bit like herding cats, even if everybody agrees with it. So I, I don't know the ordinance, apologies, and I apologize for that as to what's required to prepare an application and, and to, uh, get a parking district, uh, created. But I would suggest that the applicant be required to then, uh, pay for a consultant that the residents could use to do that or maybe staff, uh, at the commission would be able to, uh, help us and do all the work that it requires to obtain a, uh, parking district if the future study shows that there are, are the impacts that we fear there will be. Uh, those are my comments, I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Uh, anyone else wishing to make public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close public communication. At this time, the planning commission will take a ten-minute recess and we will re-adjourn at nine oh five. and we will re-adjourn at 9:05. Back in session after our recess. All right, I want to thank everyone for their public comments tonight. I wrote down a couple of questions which I will ask staff which have arisen. The first is regarding the width of Indiana Street. As proposed, this project, is Indiana Street, will it be wide enough for access for a fire truck? I think that was a concern.
Yeah, the answer is yes. Mr. Morrison stated that the minimum width is 36 feet. It's actually 26.
Okay. And then the same question from Mr. Washon regarding the width of Palm. Is Palm Avenue wide enough?
Palm Avenue is narrower than Indiana. So today, the roadbed is closer to 32 feet roughly. So it is tight there, but there's nothing really physically that you can do to improve that condition. The applicant is dedicating 12 feet of their property to potentially, you know, help to widen the streets in the future. But that's the extent of what the applicant can do in this case.
And can you, let's help explain what this property dedication is. So what the applicant is doing is basically saying, "The land that I have, I will give the right to the city to, one day if they can, take that land to make the road wider and the street wider."
Correct.
Right? And they can only do that for the land that they own on Palm.
Yes.
That small section. But if Carl's Jr. were to get redeveloped, we could ask for the same dedication and maybe widen from this project all the way to PCH in the future. So the idea is we get these rights for dedication, hopefully to use them at a future time.
Correct.
Okay.
On Indiana, just to be clear, so that road is not getting narrower. It's always been 26. It will continue to be 26.
Correct.
Okay, let's address the water quantity question. This might be a question for Elias, if you don't mind stepping up to the podium, our Public Works Director. You heard the comment from the gentleman concerned that this project would take too much quantity of water.
Right, and the response is, "I would not worry about that because our infrastructure, as it is, is fully capable for accommodating these additional units and frankly, more."
Okay, so you are not concerned in your professional capacity if this would have any negative impact on the quantity of water?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. All right, the next big issue asked in public was about this parking, preferential parking zone. So who from staff would like to give an overarching explanation of what that is, how it would work, and how it would come into play on this neighborhood?
Yeah, I could do that. So the preferential parking zone is basically, there's a whole chapter in the municipal code. I believe it's A-5A. But to summarize, what basically the process to establish that and how it works is if there are individuals who come and park in certain areas, and they do not belong to that neighborhood, and they are from out of town or other neighborhoods, they come park there for, you know, catching a flight or catching Uber, go somewhere else. It's intended to combat that problem. And the way it works is a parking study will be conducted, and if it meets the requirements of the code, and I can discuss that later, then the signs will be installed along those roadways that prohibit parking unless you have the permit to park there. And the permit is basically is a placard that is provided to each property owner who is qualified. They get two placards for typically two cars they have. If they show they have three cars, they get three placards. And they also get two guests parking. So if they have a person who is coming to visit them, they can give that placard to their guest that they could park. So if, within those hours of restricted parking, if a person is parked there without these placards to be displayed, then a police officer could issue a citation, and that's how this is enforced. So the way to do that is it takes, I believe, 70% of the adjacent property owners, they need to get together and fill out a petition. Seventy or...
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five? Oh, okay, 55. Majority, 55. Sorry about that. And then, the way, the next step, this petition will be submitted to staff. Public Works Department oversees that. It goes to the Traffic Committee, and we confirm the signatures and the people that have signed that petition. And if it meets the code requirements, then it'll be discussed, and Traffic Committee with input from Police Department will make a recommendation to the City Council. And the City Council will decide whether or not this parking restriction or preferential parking zone is going to be accommodated. If so, what are the hours of restrictions and so forth? So that's, in summary, that's the way it works, and I'd be glad to answer any question.
So the, let's take Palm Street. There's several townhomes already there, right? If those neighbors got together and got a petition, they could have placards allowing them to park in the street, right?
Yes, sir. So as I said, they have to get together and fill out the petition. That would be the step one. That is correct. So to be getting into more detail, if people on one side fill out the petition, only that side is going to be restricted. If both sides fill out the petition, both sides will be restricted. Am I making sense?
You are, you are. I have a question, though. Would the city be allowed to exclude residents of the apartments? Because aren't they in that neighborhood as well?
If there are apartments who live, who are within that zone, I have to defer to City Attorney's.
Sure. If they're residents in the designated area, then they would be eligible to seek a permit.
The whole point of having preferential parking is to keep the people who live in this project parking their cars on this project. So if the folks in these new townhomes qualify, and the folks who live in the apartments qualify, then what's the point of having the preferential parking program?
I think we can clarify the question a little bit further. If this project doesn't have any frontage in the parking district, do they qualify for the parking district?
In any parking district, the affected residents that are on the designated area will be able to seek a parking permit for themselves, up to three, or visitor permits in that area.
So is that done by address? I don't know what you mean by area. So assuming the address...
It depends on, it depends on the petition. So if we have a petition where the affected residents in that area, 55% or more within that area in a residential area, sign the petition, it goes to the traffic engineer, he makes a recommendation, then those residents that occupy dwelling units in that area, dwelling units is broadly defined, then they can obtain permits within that restricted area.
Would this project be in the residential area since we're developing its own development agreement? I mean, it's not in the R3 zone, it's not in the R1 zone. It's its own special development agreement.
Exactly, right. It's up to whatever the map developed by the petitioner ultimately looks like.
Okay, so it's up to the residents surrounding this area to come up with their own idea of where the parking area will be and who would be included in that?
Yes.
Correct. It's petition-driven.
Okay. Another question raised, which I think is a good one, is where are the hotel employees and the... where are the hotel employees and the retail employees in the parking plan presented by the applicant? Where are those guys parking?
The answer is that the commercial uses, or users, whether it's visitors to commercial uses or employees of the commercial businesses, they would park or share the parking of the residential guests. So based on the requirements, the parking requirements, 87 spaces are designated for residential guests, not the residents, but for their guests. But according to the parking demand study, 87 spaces is more than enough to accommodate just residential guests. So as a result, the employees of the commercial businesses and/or visitors to those businesses could share those 87 spaces. And they will be adequate for both, basically, residential guests and commercial users.
And the parking demand study relies in part on a actual survey taken at the hotels at like 2:00 AM, basically counting cars, correct?
Yes.
Was that during COVID? When was that done?
I think I may need to ask the traffic and parking consultant to remind us about those dates because I don't remember those off the top of my head.
Oh, I see, hand raise. Yep.
Hi, this is, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, so just to clarify, the parking study for the hotels was unequivocally done prior to COVID. So that, just to answer that question. And the retail employees and residents, they're shared parking between all of the hotel parking and the shared parking analysis and the residential guest parking.
Okay. I believe those were the questions I had from public comments. I want to thank everyone again for taking time out to share their comments on this.
Mr. Cher, if I can clarify a point.
Please.
I think I may have misheard your question. But just to clarify, so for example, if there was a petition by the residents on the north and south side of Palm between California and Washington, when a resident of a dwelling unit there goes to get a permit, they would have to show that they live at an address within that area to be eligible to receive the permit.
Yeah, okay. So if you're saying preferential parking on Palm, you have to have an address on Palm.
Correct.
So that would include the new six townhomes. They'll be on Palm. We have six townhomes with no guest parking as part of this development, right? Six townhomes with two parking per townhome, but no guest parking for those townhomes.
So in this example, I was talking about Palm between California and Washington. But if those residents of the townhomes elected to, if the petition included a portion of that...
Those are the residents who will be most affected between PCH and California to the park.
If those townhomes have a Palm address and theoretically they have frontage access to Palm,
They would have parking permits.
Those six would qualify for the parking permit.
And assuming those were included in the petition and that that 55% or more threshold was met.
Right. They would get the placards to park on the street even though that six-unit townhome doesn't have any guest parking on its property.
That's correct.
Okay, so where do the townhome guests, where are they supposed to park now? They're supposed to go to the giant retail driveway?
They can park on site, in the parking structure on that site, on the development.
Okay.
If I may also, we do not, you know, we would be in favor of restriction. We don't anticipate or would want any of the residents of our project to utilize the parking district. And in fact, if the parking district, you know, was established prior, they would be residents implemented and regardless would be open to conditions to prohibit it as well.
Okay.
There was one question, Ryan, about the cost of the parking zone and if $25,000 was enough. Do we have any information about what this might cost to implement?
We just got some informal, you know, cost estimates.
Paul, can you move the microphone closer? There you go.
We got some informal cost estimates that would involve hiring consultants to do parking surveys of the area, but it's not necessary to do that. But some of the costs in setting it up would probably involve doing community outreach to, as one of the speakers mentioned, kind of assist the residents in the area to kind of understand how you set up, do a petition and how you can kind of put that together. So, you know, that could be basically staff, you know, maybe working on an evening or on the weekend to set up a community meeting or to do flyers to let people know, hey, would you like to participate in a parking district? So those are not very big costs. There would be also maybe cost of, you know, installing signs or preparing the placards, those types of things. And from what I understand from the current operation of the existing parking district, the ongoing costs are not substantial for staff purposes, in other words.
So we could commit to not hiring a parking consultant to do that analysis?
Yeah, it may not be necessary at all, yeah.
Yeah, just step up to the podium, thank you.
Yeah, what he said is correct, although to do a parking study that would establish the need, it takes a consulting firm to be able to conduct that study. And the way typically is done, they drive around for different hours of the day and night. And if they see a vehicle, they run the license to see if the owner of the vehicle lives in the neighborhood or if they're from out of town or where. So if we want a very accurate parking study, it could get expensive because we're talking about 5:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning on weekends. So you've got to have that before you could establish the very first basic reason why you want to do this. And that is something that we definitely, definitely we need to get a consulting firm to perform and give us that information. But as he indicated, the rest of it, meetings, installing signs and issuing placards, placards are fairly cheap, it's not going to cost very much money. So the rest, as he indicated, is not costly. But the study itself, it could be costly.
Would the city have a preferential parking program next to a park? So I'm thinking about the entirety of Washington Street and then the entirety of Illinois Street, which is right next to this project.
We have not installed any restriction of any parking along our public parks. And the reason for that is, public parks belong to public, not necessarily a neighborhood. So we cannot restrict parking. And to that end, we have not and we are not going to be able to restrict parking along the frontage of those parks, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you for responding to those questions that came up during public comments. Now on to the dais. Who has questions for staff they'd like to have answered? Who wants to start?
I'm happy to start.
Please.
I'll jump in. Okay, my first question is about that blue wall issue between Mariposa and Palm. Is that, so a couple of things, is that gated? I'm not understanding necessarily the circulation for getting access into that parking structure because at one point, I think there was some comment that it's not public access, which would then require it to be restricted in some way. And if it's gated, that's going to create, I would imagine, a queuing issue, just getting in and out. And then if, while we're on that topic, we could talk a little bit about that setback issue. So there's 15 feet of property line that's not included in the project site. And if you go out there, I mean, you understand from an expense reason why that is, right? Because it's above grade. And I would imagine you need a new retaining wall, and it's pretty cost prohibitive. But that is also really valuable real estate. And I know what staff's original direction was to accommodate that. So maybe it's a question, a discussion with the applicant, what dictates what's cost prohibitive? So public access and then what can be done about that 15-foot setback?
Yeah, is there a gate on Mariposa to get into this? Because how would retail work, right?
Yeah, so just, I will begin the answer and then perhaps Lionel can take over.
Yes, we'll be happy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Lionel, we've closed Public Communications. So we're going to talk with staff and then if we've got questions for you, I'll reopen Public Communications later, okay? But thank you. Go ahead.
I was simply going to say that, yes, the fire lane that connects to Mariposa on the south and Palm on the north will have gates at the ends of the fire lane. So people coming in from either of those streets will, there will be a gate there. So they will either have to get a ticket, you know, to go in and then make their way to the parking structure and park. It's like that. The applicant can kind of explain a little bit more about who gets a ticket, how that going in and out would work.
So that is the only way to get into the parking structure, is through the gated access?
Through the fire lane and those gates, yes, on either end.
So you could enter from Palm by the townhomes through some gate and then go through and enter into the garage?
Correct, yeah.
And there will also be a gate for access off of Mariposa.
Correct.
Same thing.
Same thing.
There are two ways, it's not circular, there's access.
Is it the same on Indiana by the allot to get into that parking structure? Will there be a gate that you need to get a ticket from?
But not the street. I guess the difference to me is, we're not just talking about the parking structure being gated, we're talking about actually off of Mariposa and off of Palm being gated.
Yeah, right by the gas station.
That to me, even more than our parking issues with count is, I just, I don't know how that traffic-wise flows.
I think the applicant could add some detail to exactly how that system would work, who would get the tickets and in that regard. So you can perhaps follow up later.
Right when I told Lionel not to participate. All right, as long as you're from the applicant.
Should we do all questions and then go back to it?
Yeah, and actually, I'm sorry, I have a question that absolutely relates to that.
Sure.
Are these, are these parking garages all free? And if so, doesn't that encourage people to say, eh, it's free parking on the street? So that sort of exacerbates the problem. Or are some of these lots free? So people aren't encouraged to use the lots instead of the street?
Right, so I think the question, you were breaking up a little bit there. But the question is, is it going to look like you have to pay to get into these parking garages, which would only encourage people to try to park on the street?
I believe that the intent is to charge for parking, but the applicant can provide more detail on that.
Okay. Okay, Lionel, I think you've heard the conversation. How is, how is this parking plan going to work as far as access and the gates?
Sure, so on, I might answer some of these a little bit in, out of order. Right now, as far as speed parking goes, the, all the residential units, the parking is going to be buggled in the rent. So there is not a separate charge for parking for the residential units. So they won't have a motivation to not park in the parking structure. PCC North, PCC South, as well the commercial, will have a validation system, you know, with free parking for the first two hours with validation or hour and a half along those lines, what's reasonable for visiting the retail uses. And the hotels operate like they currently operate. So it wouldn't be much different in use. As far as access goes, what we're talking about on PCC North, what we're trying to avoid is the situation where we're creating a public cut-through there. We think it would cause, you know, more congestion and also just not as good of a condition on the backside of that property. So the first set of gates going in, the arm going in can either be an arm or no arm at all, but the exit has an arm to let people out, so that way people can't cut through. And there'll be a ticketing system at the parking structure. The residents will have fobs, so they'll be able to go right through. They go on the cars, they barely even have to stop or slow down for it to get activated. And the non-residents there, which would be the, you know, retail patrons, will get a ticket that they could get validated and then they'll use that. I'll stop there for a second and then I could talk about the wall as well. But I just want to make sure if there's any questions or clarifications just on that parking response.
I have one to add to that conversation.
Sure.
I'm hypersensitive to delivery trucks and how UPS and FedEx will get into your retail establishments up in the front there.
Sure, we have a loading zone on PCC North and for trucks and delivery trucks, as well as on the Fairfield Parking and on PCC South. So we have designated delivery areas for trucks and FedEx and that sort of thing.
And on that public access question for that road, I thought I saw maybe in staff report because it wasn't initially considered to be public access, that that would then impact the EIR? Do we have to go back to that?
If we were to change the plan to make that public access so people could drive through that fire lane, you know, from Mariposa to Palm, then we would have to kind of relook at the circulation patterns that would result from that. So there will be some additional analysis required. Perhaps the traffic consultant that did the traffic study can elaborate on that.
Jake, if you maybe put up a slide, if you still have access for the blue wall.
Yep, just give me one moment.
Thank you.
And there is no guest parking for those townhomes whatsoever, no?
There's nothing.
The townhomes are able to utilize the guest parking, the parking in the parking structure if they need to. So this is the blue wall and area of it. You can kind of see it down in the picture on the far right with the red area. That's the 15-foot strip. And it is a significant cost to move it back. But more than that, we've made a decision. You'll look at the first four apartment buildings on the southern end. And, you know, for whatever reason historically, those apartment buildings have kind of co-opted that portion of land as their backyards. And you can see that the actual property line practically abuts those four buildings. And so we thought it would be, you know, not, the benefit of moving that wall would not outweigh the condition that would create for our neighbors there. And similarly, over on the north end, while the condominiums and the other apartment buildings, the condominiums and the two and the larger apartment building are not using that strip of land as a backyard, they have that buffer of landscape that's more at their level. And moving it would just get the project closer to them, but also lower their kind of landscape buffer down to street level on our project side. And once again, we thought that that probably is not a, you know, the benefit of that extra space didn't kind of outweigh the downside of that. So that, I hope, helps to explain the blue wall in our rationale there. Thank you, Jim.
I had another quick question about the right turn only, which actually happens out of Carl's Jr. onto Palm Avenue.
Yes.
And the reason that happened was to eliminate the congestion of going westbound on Palm because of the residential area back in there. So moving all of that traffic through onto PCH and then wherever they were going to go. Has there been any thought about a right turn only? Ryan, maybe that's more a... Maybe that's more a city question, a staff, city staff question, coming out of that area?
I, I would like to say we heard that comment as well from a gentleman earlier in the evening about the Carl's Jr. right turn only. And, and hearing you bring it up as well, we, we would, we would be happy to implement that over on Palm Avenue on our project as well. To make it a right turn only that does sound like it makes sense to us.
If I may, Commissioner, that would change the traffic patterns and traffic flow from, resulting from the project. So we may need to just study that potential change to the traffic patterns and where it directs vehicles and whether it's creating issues somewhere else. So that, that's all.
I think that should be said.
We may have to look at that a little bit.
And I, I think to Michelle's point, I think the, the queuing of getting in and out of the property with, with the gates off of Mariposa and off of Palm, I think needs to be looked at closer too.
Well, I think you said there'd be no gate going in, so you wouldn't have a line, there's only gates to get out. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So if you're turning in Mariposa, you just go in and you park?
Yeah, but if you are, if you're, if you're, if you're eastbound on Mariposa, can you turn left?
Probably.
Into the, into that area? Into that alley area?
You can now, I think.
Right, and so if you, so the queuing back there is what I'm thinking of on Mariposa, that people are gonna start stacking up, cars are coming, I can't turn left yet, here we go, now I can go.
Right.
And then if there's, if there is. He was not sure that there could be an arm or not an arm, at some point I have to take a ticket because I'm going in, so I have to stop here.
You have to get a ticket to get out.
To get out?
Yeah, there's no arm to go in, you're, you're free to go in and then you have to get a validation or if you live there, you have a key fob which is gonna let you get out.
Oh.
There's only a gate to get out. So that, hopefully that alleviates any buildup or congestion on Mariposa or Palm, people trying to, you know, pull a ticket, you know how it goes.
And how long, how do they know how long I've been there?
I don't know.
Or if you turn in by accident and then you're just in this giant cluster to try to get out of it, I don't know, I think an arm is a, is a problem, I think.
So there's nothing, it's just like it's open, you just drive in?
I think we make that a condition, that there would be no gates impeding people from entering in order to avoid cars stacking up on Mariposa or Palm or even Indiana, right?
Yeah.
And if they stack up getting out, who cares?
If I may, Chair, the, the plans currently show gates on both sides, going in and going out. But I think what the applicant is doing is, is offering to not have a gate on the way in. So perhaps that might be a condition of approval for the site plan review application, if you're interested in doing that.
Another, a question about the townhomes, one of staff's suggestion was to reduce them from six to four and face them towards each other. If that were the case, do you gain any guest parking opportunity?
Are you mean directly next to the townhomes?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, perhaps we haven't done the geometry, you know, to, to figure out exactly whether there's room. It might be tight to, to get guest parking right next to the townhomes, but we haven't studied that. We haven't put together the site plans to figure out whether it fits or not.
Well, I think that should be said too.
A question for staff, I think when we initially had this project on the agenda, there was a question about trash access for the commercial. But I think it's gone away in this revision, so has that been resolved? There's a way to load off the back of the, get trash trucks through off the back of the property?
Yes, it has been addressed to a large extent. There is room on the site plan now for trash trucks to be able to maneuver in and out of the properties and, and fit on the property so that they can load up and then turn around and go. One of our main concerns was with PCC South, because the trash was near PCH and driveway was shared between Aloft and the new building. However, in a later iteration of the plans, the applicant provided additional space for that purpose so that those trash trucks can actually maneuver and turn around and go.
I have a commercial condo question. So the way that it's envisioned now, there would be two maps, one for the residential, one for the condo, for the commercial. And then would, could the commercial be subdivided so that they could be sold off? Or it would have to be retained by the same ownership?
The intent is to make that a, kind of an option to potentially sell off condo spaces in the commercial units.
Is that being requested by the applicant?
Yes.
They're required to have CCNRs for maintenance? I mean, if that happens, who's gonna maintain the, or I guess a better question is, the, the applicant is guaranteed to remain, to maintain the public space, right? Or is that gonna be left delegated to this?
There's a, there's a condition of approval requiring the CCNRs to have specific provisions about the maintenance of the, the units and also the public right of way in front of the commercial spaces. So yes, the applicant would prepare CCNRs for city review and approval that would include provisions regarding the maintenance.
Okay, but that would only bind the purchasers of these commercial condo spaces?
Yeah, if they have a sort of that, sort of association, it, it would be that entity that would be responsible.
Okay, can we make it so that the applicant would be ultimately responsible for that public benefit? Because I've lived in townhomes and I've dealt with HOAs and CCNRs and it's a good way to get nothing done. So my concern is that we'll get this great public benefit and then a year or two it'll start to deteriorate and won't be maintained. And then we'll no longer have a public benefit. So that's my concern with it being tied to this commercial condo development that's gonna be bought by who knows?
It is, it is possible to kind of reformulate a, a condition to that effect. However, we wanna make sure the applicant can address that idea and, you know, agree to that type of condition.
We'll make a list.
And I think my last question for staff, do we have an estimate of impact fees generated by the project?
Yes, we do. It is roughly two million dollars in development impact fees. That includes traffic, police, fire, parks and library services.
Was there like in our previous item where they paid a hundred and forty to improve two specific intersections? Was that same analysis done on this project to determine what could be done for Palm and Mariposa and the other intersections that'll be impacted by these cars coming and going?
That was not done in this particular case. There was a traffic analysis that, to identify whether there are significant impacts. And the traffic analysis did not identify any potential significant impacts from this project.
Can you give me a little education on an impact fee? So say we have two million dollars in impact fees to cover those categories, police, fire, library, park. Does that money get earmarked for specific projects?
It does not get earmarked for specific projects, but there are special funds for each of those categories. So the parks fee goes to a parks improvement fund. And then the parks department, when it needs to do, make upgrades to its facilities. For instance, adding more playground equipment in, at one of its parks, they can utilize those funds to improve and increase sort of the amenities at the city's parks.
Thank you, and that's the impact fee based on the new schedule that we'll be seeing sometime soon for 2022?
The, the, this particular application is subject to the fees that are in place today. So we, if we wanted to make the requirement sort of in the future, what the future fees are, then we'd have to have a discussion, see whether the applicant is willing to abide by the, what the future fees will be this year or next year.
Because when we saw some previous projects, I thought that was a question, like the Chargers facility. We said they're gonna pay the impact fees based on the new schedule, but this project is paying fees based on a 2015 update.
Yeah, the, the, the study on the impact fees has not been completed yet, has not been adopted. So this project is in, in sort of in progress right now, so it's subject to what is in place today, yeah.
So if I can chime in on this topic, because when the NLP came out, it provided comments prior to being on the planning commission. One of my biggest concerns was the impact to city services primarily park and recreational uses. Because this particular project doesn't provide any open space or any recreational facilities to the community. But it's adding a, a pretty significant amount of residents. I think that I heard it was a thousand residents, please correct me if I'm wrong. But the, the last time I, I checked, the city of El Segundo, based on its population and the current acreage of recreational space, is three point eight acres per thousand residents. So if this project has a thousand residents, we, we have a net loss, or I don't know, lost is the right word, but we have a shortfall of three point eight acres of recreational space to maintain our current ratio. And I didn't realize that the, the development fee was, was only two million dollars and that's gonna be split between fire, library, police and parks and rec. So well, let's say it's to split equally into four, is five hundred thousand dollars enough to make up that shortfall for that three point eight acres to maintain what we currently have as a community? And that's my biggest, well, well, one of my biggest concerns when it comes to this project, my biggest concern when it comes to recreation. Do we have the recreational facilities in place to accommodate a thousand more residents? To, to make it comfortable or not? Because, you know, everyone loves our recreational use, that's part of the reason why, you know, people move here. And I'm worried that, you know, the, the parks along Washington will, will be crowded and we won't be able to have the same type of activity that we have now. So I think that we as a planning commission have to decide, is that enough of a development fee or to overcome that three point eight acre shortfall?
If I may. As far as strictly, strictly speaking with regard to development impact fees, there's, we're required to only charge, as, as Paul was indicating, what, what is currently approved. And that gives developers certainty in determining, determining where they may want to develop a project. That notwithstanding, contractually, as Paul also indicated, through development agreement, there could, there is flexibility should the applicant agree to pay beyond the statutorily set development impact fees. So that, that's, that's a question of contract as opposed to sort of a mitigation fee component. Just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
We would just call it.
Could it be a question of negotiation?
Yeah, we would just call it something else. You wouldn't call it an impact fee, you would call it a development agreement, public benefit, whatever you wanna call it. You know, donation to the aquatics fund for our struggling plunge. I mean, there's a million park needs that, that could be funded above and beyond the two million dollar impact fees.
But going forward, because this is a question that I feel like has come up and I thought that my understanding was until a project pulls permits, we can't, they're not locked into an impact fee. Because I remember having this conversation when we talked about Raytheon and the Charger site. And we're approving some massive projects.
Right.
That, and our, my.
With an outdated fee schedule.
With a very outdated fee structure, that's, I think El Segundo is very generous fees in comparison to our neighbors.
What, what would the difference be if asked to be current, a, 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 a current fee structure today?
I don't have the, the potential numbers of what the fees will be, so I couldn't provide that comparison to you right now. I haven't seen a, a draft of the study myself, so I, I can't tell you for sure.
How, who decides how the fees are spent? Is that city councils, that Public Works or Capital Improvements?
I think the question was how, who determines how the fees are spent?
It's a city council.
City council.
Maybe this is a discussion, I don't know, do we have more questions before I dig into the discussion? But I don't wanna make this project particularly feel like they're being kind of raked over the coals for this. But I also know that we're supposed to get an impact fee schedule in Q1, which is, we're almost there by the end of Q1. So I don't wanna approve this and then have, you know, it would be like triple what they're paying. So having some information on what we're potentially gonna go up to would be helpful.
We're, we're just not gonna be able to have that information tonight because it's currently in study. They're, they're in the midst of doing the analysis to update the fees based on current demand. That, and so we, we just don't have that, that projection at this time.
Yeah, and ultimately whatever that will be, it'll be established by council based on the study. But I wanted to circle back to Commissioner Calder's earlier statement about, about the Chargers. And yeah, with the Chargers, similar to what we just did with Standard Works, there is the condition about the impact fee payment. Excuse me, and that fee amount as, 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 as incorporated into the condition of approval requires that the amount is based upon the adopted fee at the time a building permit is issued. So presumably if they were coming tomorrow and pull, pull a building permit fee or a building permit, we would base it, that fee on that 2015. Whereas, you know, hopefully, you know, this impact fee study gets done relatively soon. That by the time the impact fees or the building permit is issued, it'll be after that study, it'll be, you know, to whatever that new fee is gonna be.
So that's the same case here, it's based on when they pull a building permit?
In this case, is that, is that the commissioner here?
Well, if, if they, they'll be subject to the development impact fees. However, we are, we have a development agreement in place, I, I mean, in, in front of you. So if the development agreement is approved, the applicant will be sort of.
They'll be locked in.
We'll be, yes, locked in, we'll expect that.
Doesn't matter when they pull the permit, if we approve the agreement, they get these fees.
Got it.
And I know it's, if we could circle back again about the, all of the employees, it's, we're gonna take PCC North. And the employees and the guests and there's adequate parking, we feel, for all of that? That's, because that is.
Well, when it, when it comes to the commercial and the hotels, that's not based on what our code requires. That's based on this parking demand study, which is based upon a comparison to, what was it, Palo Alto?
Yeah, other, other similar projects and similar circumstances.
Okay, so that reminds me of the Chick-fil-A study that they gave us, remember? And they told us, well, we're gonna look at Valencia and we're gonna look at Long Beach, right? They didn't tell us about Torrance, they didn't tell us about the one in Venice, right? So when, when I look at a parking study that says, oh, we have a similar project in Northern California and I know, well, that's not by LAX and it's not on PCH, I, I kinda, I kinda have my doubts because who's seen a car back up on the Chick-fil-A line and block traffic? I know I see them all the time, right? But we were, we were told up and down, ten ways to Sunday, it won't be a problem, we've got this study. We can get, we can get people in and out of there. And yet every day, cars are blocking the street and I've seen them back up on Sepulveda.
Oh yeah, for sure.
So I'm a little hesitant to just put all my faith in a parking study saying that the employees will just park in the residential area and the hotel, you don't need one spot for every hotel room? That seems a little fantastical. I I I do not believe there's enough parking. And I think what's gonna happen is it's gonna spill over in the residential neighborhoods. Those folks who live will do a will do a preferential parking. And then that'll just push the traffic further into the residential neighborhood. And why I'm all for, you know, new housing and low income housing, I I don't think it's fair if it's at the expense of people who already live here. Like, there has to be a compromise to where is this project too big? Is this too many units? Should there be more parking? Could it be better self-contained? I mean, these are big questions, but we don't get to ask these questions until right now.
I will say on the parking, because I think one public comment person brought up what a significant departure it is from what's in our current code. This is another issue where I do think our parking code is outdated. So our parking code is based on R one developed two per unit. That's just not, that doesn't jive with multifamily housing. Every unit should not have, a studio does not need two parking spaces. So on the red, on the amount of parking provided for the residential, I am not as concerned as maybe some of this cross use with the hotel. Just because I think we're still, like, if you look at a city of LA parking code, we're still gonna be significantly above that, even with the adjustment. There's a high number of studios and one bedrooms, and those do not dictate, I don't believe, a two parking stalls per unit.
Right, on residential, but.
On residential.
The the code states one space per unit of lodging house. And okay, they they had an off month in two thousand and nineteen, but. We're gonna, we're gonna place our faith that the the hotel business is not going to improve. And they're never gonna be at capacity with the Olympics coming to town, with the Super Bowl this weekend. I mean, it seems kinda like you take a snapshot and we're supposed to believe this is how it's always gonna be for the next ten years? Right? I mean, that that's the reason why we have planning commissions is because the folks who live in this town have a pretty good idea about what goes on in this town. So I I get that low income housing, we we can't really, you know, the the state is gonna tell us how much parking those units get, and that's fine. And I agree with you, a studio probably doesn't need two cars. The residential might be, might be, might be okay, but this this idea of a pool parking where if I'm gonna go use a retail. And and I'm gonna park in a garage two blocks down versus just park in the street, I'm gonna park in the street.
Paul, when I mentioned the right turn only on Palm Avenue out of coming out of that um. That alley, that park, that parking, that that facility, you said that um. That 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 then generates a whole new parking structure or traffic flow study or what?
The uh, the traffic consultant can perhaps assist me with this. But uh when when a traffic analysis is conducted, uh there are some sort of estimates prepared. Some reasonable assumptions regarding uh which way will cars go when they come to the site or leave the site? Will they, will they leave on Palm Avenue? Will they turn left or right on Palm Avenue? Will they turn left or right onto Mariposa? So the assumption in our parking, in our traffic study was that cars would tra would turn left and right. Going going in and out of the property. So what that 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 what that means is that uh vehicles leaving the site would be dispersed. So half of them would go left, half of them would go right. If we if we require them, all all them to go right going out of that site, then double the number of cars would go from Palm to PCH. So we just wanna uh look at those numbers uh and kind of check our traffic study and the model. And the traffic study to see what will that create an impact at that intersection by, you know, um. That's that's all we we wanna do. We just wanna make sure that we look at that. I'm not saying it will require a brand new traffic study, but I just, that's something that our traffic consultant will need to help us with. What do we need to do? What do we need to check to make sure it doesn't uh create any issues?
I i- is the traffic consultant a available to answer that?
Uh, they they are, they are, and I'll I'll pass it uh pass it to them to clear uh to clarify that. Um, I do wanna clarify a couple of things. Um, one, just going back to the fees. Uh, the development agreement does provide that the project needs to pay the fees that are in place at the time that the permit is pulled. So just to clear that up, it's section four, five, thirty, I think, of the development agreement. Um, so uh we are gonna be required uh based off of the free schedule in place, a time of the permit. And not the current one that's in place today waiting for the update. And then, uh, you know, Chair Baldino raised, uh, you know, uh valid concerns about parking. And and Michelle talked about the residential, which is accurate. Uh, the code is somewhat outdated in uh being punitive, especially the studio and one bedroom apartment units. Requiring more parking than, you know, a single family home that's uh three thousand square feet, for instance. Uh, on the hotel, the parking study that was done, it was actually uh counts that were done on the hotel. And then it's, and then rose up to assume one hundred percent occupancy of the hotel. So it's not like the uh, the parking study assumed that the hotel was seventy percent or sixty percent on that night. It was done to maximum capacity. And these hotels approximate to LAX, there's just a lot of uh residents, flight, not residents, but uh uh guests. Flight crews, people that don't necessarily bring in a car, Uber, taxi, shuttle. Um, so it affects the the parking count, but it was all based off of uh real world counts that were there pre-COVID. Uh, at a hundred percent occupancy uh of the hotel. And um with that, I we have Tom Gahl, I believe, for uh with Fair and Peers. Uh, who could provide um some clarification uh on the uh the the potential study. Tom, are you available?
I am here. Um, good evening commissioners, Tom Gahl with Fair and Peers, um traffic consultants and transition planners. Uh, and as you've heard, we prepared the traffic study for the EIR. Um, I think the particular question uh that I've been asked to address is about uh Palm. And whether if there was a restriction placed on Palm to have right turn out only from the project site. Um, whether that would require new traffic analysis? I believe that was the question. And uh, you know, I mean, Paul's correct, and we would have to take a quick look at it. But honestly, I don't think it would change the conclusions of the study very much, if at all. Um, because uh we did not, in the study, assume that there was a lot of traffic coming out to Palm from the project. And then going over to PCH and then turning left, because that's a really, really hard move to make, right? And so we had, we assumed that most of the people would be, you know, project traffic would really be using Mariposa, which is um signalized at PCH. Um, and so at the extent that project traffic was coming out and going over to PCH, you know, on Palm, we're coming out to Palm at all. It's it's smaller amount of traffic that would be turning right on the Palm to begin with, around, excuse me, on the PCH. And there's just not a lot of that um that the product is generating. So I really don't think that uh portion of project traffic to turn right would have a uh a dramatic effect on the traffic study, if if any at all.
Thank you. I think that this is kind of uh. Or, you know, the paper studies and kind of what what would would I think really happen kind of differ. I think, yes, I think Palm is a very hard place to turn. I think that people would try to avoid that. I also think that Mariposa would be a hard place to turn. And I saw that forty, you you indicated forty percent of your outgoing traffic going the one oh five. I think that both those intersections are gonna be really tough, um because they're really narrow streets um for that forty percent to get the one oh five. So the alternative is to go west and to go to Center Street to go get to the one oh five on ramp there. And that wasn't considered in the traffic study. That's a real world thing versus a paper study thing, where I think that the residents would be impacted by the circulation here. So have you, did you think about that? Was that addressed in the in the traffic study? That there are other options to get to that, that for that forty percent of residents to get to the one oh five. That goes through residential communities.
The uh, the traffic study itself, um, no, we did not. Um, we had the traffic coming out mostly at Mariposa. The uh, I believe that was a comment that was addressed though in the response to comments in the final AR where that was looked at.
And and we're happy.
What was the response to that in in the final AR, if it was responded to?
I don't have that in front of me right now. Commissioner, I'm sorry.
And and we're happy to look at the effects of the no right turn uh for confirmation of how that would uh. The no right turn to see how that would uh affect things. We're happy to do that. And just. Sorry, no left turn. And just just one other clarification on the amount of residents. Um, in the uh, the the uh, you know, uh. The study projected about six hundred eighteen project residents, not a thousand. I'm I'm not sure uh where that uh number comes came from. Um, but that's uh probably a more accurate representation of the number of residents.
Okay.
But your point is still well taken.
Yeah, and I guess, yeah, one of my biggest concerns in terms of circulation is is the heavy use of Indiana Street in all of this. That seems to be kind of the the primary entrance and exit point for the residences. I think going, you know, people that will choose to go to PCH um will be passersby with, you know, like. Not knowing that there are other options to get in, just because it's it's a hard street um to navigate. And the the real world, when whenever, you know, I go down Indiana Street, I basically have to let one, someone will let me pass or I'll let that that let them pass. I mean, it's a two lane street, but realistically, you can't have a lot of traffic on that street. And then on top of that, it seems to be a very high delivery truck area, like to by by Chair Newman's point, that, you know, delivery trucks are a thing here. An issue here in town, but that street in particular seems to be always heavy on delivery trucks. Where, you know, it's not a good street to go down generally. So if you're increasing the the traffic and um the, I guess, the the use of that street. Um, even though it is a two lane street, it's not your typical two lane street that provides for, you know, two cars passing each other freely um at the same time. So I do have concerns with that. Are are there any other access points or any other options there? And on top of that, Mariposa is is also a very narrow street and so so is Palm. I think that all the streets around it are are, although they are two lane streets, that they're all very narrow. Um, even on a normal day, it's it's very hard to, yeah, off peak hours is very hard to to navigate those streets.
Yeah, on on Mariposa or on uh Indiana for PCC South, uh, you know, correct. Uh, the primary access point or the access point for the residential will be uh off of Indiana. Uh, for the uh hotel parking, for the hotel guests, that access will still be off of PCH. Um, one of the kind of interesting things about this project site, you know, because uh, you know, with all, as with all development, it's kind of uh give and take. Um, but the current uh building, the Hacienda building of about forty thousand square feet, for instance. Is currently, you know, undeveloped, but they they have rights under the general plan to, you know, remodel that building with permitted uses. Uh, commercial, uh retail. And so if they, if if that was remodeled, for instance, would be a restaurant and a drugstore, something along that nature. It's currently about forty thousand square feet. Um, you know, that could be done uh by right without right turn lanes. Uh, and all the other improvements, it would actually generate more traffic uh than both PCC North and PCC South combined. And that's not to say that traffic still isn't uh an issue uh that, you know, needs lots of attention. But in this particular site, there's also a use that would generate additional traffic too. Uh, that may help to kind of offset the net impact um of traffic, uh, you know, from this particular development site. So it's just so- something that's kind of interesting uh to note as well. But your concerns, uh, you know, are 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 certainly noted. And um, like I said, it's not, uh, everything is a hundred percent ideal. But we are still trying to keep everything closer to PCH, which is the main in-out. You know, everyone uh going south certainly uh will have good access. And north, um, you know, is where we're trying to improve that intersection on Mariposa with the right turn lane.
Okay. Um, and so I I was looking at the traffic study and one of the intersections, I believe it's Palm and PCH. Has a a level service of F with a delay of two hundred and fifty-five seconds. And i- i- is that right, Mr. Gahl? Is is that the intersection? I I don't know.
Uh, well, yeah, okay, that is a non-signalized intersection. So uh let me explain briefly uh that the way a level service analysis done is done for a sing, in this case, a single stop control, not even two-way. Uh, intersection is that you only are looking at the delay for that worst stop controlled movement, in this case, the left turn on the PCH. So it's, yes, it's a really, really hard left turn. I think everybody would admit that, right? Left turn on the PCH for Palm is very difficult if you wait for a while to do that. And because of that, if you look at the volumes that are making that turn too, they're actually very low, because people know that. People know it's hard to do. And yet, and yet, when we show the the number that comes out of the calculations, you know, for the delay, it's horrible. But it's only for that left turn and very few people are doing it because it is that hard.
Right, right. And, you know, a a delay of over eighty gets you an F.
Yeah, that's right.
This is delay.
But it's not the same way if we look at it for a signalized intersection, for example, where you're really looking at all the movements, you know, at the intersection.
Right, 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 e- exactly, yeah, that, but it goes from eighty, which would get you an F, to two hundred and fifty-five, which is, you know, the. It it a lot more than eight, multiple times more than eighty, which I guess, you know, supports my point that people will go left. And onto Center Street to get to the one oh five. So it it furthers my point that I think that people are gonna go into the residential communities to get to where they they wanna go. Instead of going right and then turning, go going right onto Palm and then turning left on the PCH. And I think people will avoid PCH regardless, even at maybe bypass Mariposa and get to Center Street, which is two blocks away. There's a elementary school there, it goes right to the heart of the neighborhoods. And and that, to me, that's my biggest circulation concern, is that you're diverting all these residential folks, especially when you guys are are making the. Statement that forty percent of the the people leaving the project are going to the one oh five. So that is a primary option and all the other, you know, this left turn is is really difficult. Mariposa is gonna be really difficult to get there. I think almost the the vast majority of that, especially if the residents that are, you know, living there, for some time, they'll figure it out pretty quickly. And they're gonna go through the community and and by the elementary school. So I I there wasn't a question there, I'm just, I was just making a comment. So a- as part of the development agreement, I think, you know, there there's um brought up putting uh some open space in the. It it within the facility and putting pedestrian seating on on PCH, which is, you know, it's, i- i- it's fine. Is there any way we can divert any of that money to, instead of seating on PCH or landscaping on PCH, to landscaping along the the parks on Washington Boulevard? Because I think that the residents there, this walking distance to to the project. So I think that would probably be the primary park that that would be used. It's, you know, a couple of blocks away. I think that that's probably more important than um, you know, small little uh seating facing PCH. I think that 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 would be a better use of funds and would better support the the parks and rec here within the city. If if money was diverted that way. So, and then, um, is the development agreement something that we approve, would approve tonight? Or is that something that we can approve everything else but the development agreement? I guess this is a question for staff.
We have in the past approved environmental impact reports and zone lot amendments. And not approved the development agreement in situations where you're dealing with, let's say, I don't know, a Raytheon. Where we felt like the benefit given to the applicant uh far exceeds the public benefit. Given to the city in return, if that makes sense. So, yeah, the planning commission has done that. Um, but ultimately, it goes to city council who who makes the the yes or no decision on all these things. I mean, our our job is to give our advice and counsel and and try to make recommendations to the best of our ability of of what we'd like to see. Um, but yes, to answer your question, we we have done that from this dice before. We have approved everything but the development agreement.
And just to add that, ul- ultimate approval of a development agreement lies with the council, so there there can be a recommendation either way, as far as the terms of the DA, but um, it would ultimately have to be approved by the council um, via ordinance, thank you.
I had a quick question eh, about the um, the community room, um. And the and meeting spaces like that are really, really hard to come by and and that feels incredibly generous to have it, but how how does um, Lionel, maybe you can answer that, how how does that plan on getting used? And they they share the parking and and um, how how do how, what are your thoughts on that or what what is your?
Um, the the community meeting space, uh, uh, like I mentioned, is designed for El Segundo nonprofits and is part of the commercial program of the project. So the parking is provided uh, in the parking structure, uh, you know, right adjacent to it as part of it. Um, and the process, we would have a system uh, to be a a a uh, manual system, but most likely, it's gonna be some sort of uh, online system where community groups uh, get priority on booking their uh, spaces uh, for their needs uh, in that space. And uh, we're gonna build it out, we're gonna, you know, do all of the uh, millworks, cabinets, the TVs, the restaurants, everything, it'll be turnkey uh, ready to go and uh, they will not be uh, charged any uh, fee for rent to uh, utilize that space. So that's kind of the the framework um, that we're thinking about for implementing uh, the space.
Thank you.
I I I do uh, do wanna add that I I do think this is a really good project, I think that uh, you know, one one of the commenters brought up the point that, you know, that they were concerned that it would change kind of the character of that side of town, and I think that, I mean, it's a point well taken, I appreciate that that comment a lot. And I do agree with him that it will change the the character, but I think that it it brings this hu- because we've never had this kind of high density kind of housing. So to me, it adds this kind of character, and I think Lionel, in your presentation, you you brought up the you had a slide talking about the diversity that it would bring to the community, which I think is really, really important, especially in this town, you know, we we, you know, this town's been around for a long time, and I think that we do need some more diversity, whether it be um, uh, ethnic background or economic diversity, and I do think it's important to have affordable housing, um, you know, especially for for uh, public servants, like police officers and and fire uh, and and teachers. And, you know, having this affordable housing can help recruit people from other areas, people don't wanna commute to the LAX area generally, so there and in addition to that, I think, you know, this corridor is a lot of what people think or see of El Segundo. Um, and I said this, we even proved that the project across the street, that I think people will enjoy seeing this stuff compared to what's there now, so I think it's it's a really beautiful project, and I think that it'll it'll you know, it'll it'll help the community overall, but again, I think that my biggest concerns are the the parks and rec and and the traffic circulation, but, you know, this is a really good project, I don't want to give Lionel and Marve- Ventures uh, you know, that that I get the impression that I think otherwise, so.
Um, I was breaking up a little bit before talking about uh, parking fees, can you guys hear me okay now?
Yes.
So uh, Ryan, I know you're very concerned about uh, this thing being underparked. Um, I do think trends are going to go towards fewer cars. Um, there there certainly is a um, a a difference in housing types here versus the single-family homes around most of El Segundo. And I'm thinking about other neighborhoods in Los Angeles where there's retail and there's parking structures. And the neighborhoods are very well signed, that basically say, if if you don't live here, you can't park here, I mean, there's 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 permit parking. But then the parking garages also do a very good job of saying free parking with validation or uh, in what what we wanna do is incentivize people to use the parking garages so they stay off the streets. So I think that signage program is gonna be very important. Uh, I believe that uh, and I hope that there is enough parking for everyone, but uh, I'd I'd certainly like to see the parking not spill out onto the streets if uh, if 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 there's any way that we can help that.
That's a good point, Jay, I guess we should ask, are there requirements in here for signage, kind of like we do with Chick-fil-A, to direct members of the public on how they park? Like on P C H South, you have to go around Indiana, will there will there be some type of signage to inform people?
There's there's no language right now in the conditions of approval, other than requiring submittal of a sign program for review. But uh, we can add, we can add language to that condition, to this.
We would support that.
Right, and uh, and then, of course, traffic is always the other big hot topic and uh, I think Kevin's right that uh, residents are going to wanna head west before they head east and into the neighborhood, so I believe Lionel said that that you guys would consider making no left turn on Palm, uh, which I think would help. Um, but uh, I I don't I don't think there's any doubt that this is gonna have an impact on traffic and and that you always have to take the good with the bad, this is a significant change, we do need more housing, we do need more affordable housing. Uh, all those things have an impact on a community, so um, trying to 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 mitigate these traffic impacts as best we can, uh, i- I think is the right thing to do for all our community.
All right, well, I have a list um, that I wanna see if there's consensus on the dais uh, for for these. First uh, is the request for a right turn only on Palm. Do we have consensus on that? I got three nods.
Yes, and eh, and if we're doing that, what happens on the other end on Mariposa? Because to what Kevin, as he as he eloquently explains it, clearly, we know, if I'm gonna turn, come out of that project, I'm gonna turn right, I'm gonna go down to Center Street or whatever, make my way around to get to the one oh five freeway. So what happens if now there's left turn only coming out of onto Mariposa as well, in other words, trying to eliminate that added traffic into the community?
But Brenda, don't you want those same people to do to drive into downtown and use those services and?
Yeah, I want them, I want the, I want the street to go straight to three three seven Main Street.
One stop.
I- 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 is there a way we can do kind of a a more of a, I guess, re- refined circulation studies that, I don't know if that's a thing, but to to see where we should put don't turn here's or this way only kind of things that wouldn't hinder the progress of the project?
I think you'd probably get away with right turn only on Palm, but if every exit had a restriction, then we'd be right back to having to reevaluate the whole project, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, that that's what I was worried about, but I guess, I mean, would something like that trigger it, that's why I asked, can we do that outside of this approval process? I I guess that that would be for any Sequo experts here that wouldn't trigger any recirculation. Is that something we can do?
Just uh, our our opinion that the right, the uh, right turn only on Palm is doable, but after that, you really start restricting flow and it would be, it would be difficult uh, for the project.
Sure, uh, we we may craft a condition that suggests that they work with staff on signage, uh, it it could be treated as a minor modification to the site, we we, if it does impact traffic in a way that does impact the Sequo analysis, then i- it could be something that has to come back to the commission, but we could coordinate with the applicant to look at signage after the fact, do additional study and and look at traffic flow and and process it through a, you know, a minor modification uh, that doesn't necessarily trigger additional Sequo, uh, as long as we do that analysis, you know, that that is a pathway to to look at that, that doesn't necessarily be coming back. Well, why don't we, why don't I propose this, why don't we start with the right turn only on Palm, everyone seems to agree that won't have any impact. And then we'll have staff monitor this after construction and come back to us in six months. After the project is alive and people have been using it, we'll have a staff report coming back on uh, the impacts of traffic and circulation, and then we can do a circulation analysis and retain our jurisdiction to add more signs or restrictions or whatever it is. I I, I think if we have the ability to monitor this um, and make adjustments as needed, then I feel a little bit more confident in relying on these reports or telling them that there's not gonna be a problem. As long as we have the tools and the ability to address problems in the future, then I I would feel, I would feel much more comfortable um, letting this proceed as it's written. Okay, we we can we can craft that.
I think that's fair, I I, um, you know, just from a sequel perspective, I think that uh, you're putting it as as something of like a project condition less than a mitigation measure prevents us from having to to recirculate or anything like that.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a mitigation measure, it's just a a community benefit part of the development agreement.
Right.
They're gonna, they're gonna be good neighbors, I mean, Continental and 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 Mar Vista have shown project over project that they are are very good developers and they're they're, in in my opinion, they are residents of this town. We have seen enough of their developments, they are uh, members of the community, so I I have a lot of confidence in their abilities to to make this project work. Uh, that being said, that there are questions I have, uh, there are concerns, there are there are concerns from people who live in the neighborhood, which are valid. So I I think asking them or asking staff to give us a a checkup in six months and then we can see how it is, and if we need you to come back another six months, we can deal with it then. But that might help at at least with the traffic circulation elements.
Chair, I might suggest, just based on some of the comment that you you made as well, that we add, you know, some analysis to to that look back study related to parking as well.
Sure. Okay, um, the next item I have written down is uh, no gates on Mariposa and Palm to enter, but we would require gates to leave, to exit. And I I think Lionel has a good point, where if there are no gates there, someone is gonna turn right on Palm and then use Indiana to try to beat two traffic lights, 'cause they do that now when they're commuting south. They'll they'll turn by the Hacienda and then they'll bomb down Indiana until they get to El Segundo, then they'll get back on P C H. So he's he's right, to have those gates, it'll it'll help kind of keep that area calm and and more hopefully pedestrian friendly. But I also, uh, to Michelle's point, I don't like the idea of there being a gate to get in, 'cause then you're queuing up on the street backing up onto P C H. So do we have consensus on that request? Okay.
Yep.
Um, and then and then Lionel, uh, my request about that community room, uh, it sounds like a great public benefit, my my concern is that it won't be properly maintained if handed over to the condominium HOA. Is that something that the the owners of the apartments could maintain?
Um, right now, I mean, we've we've done this in several different projects in the area where there's a association between the commercial uh, you know, uh, and office in most cases, in this case, it's uh, residential. But there's an association that in uh, in the DA requires that um, both parties need to maintain uh, their respective uh, properties. Um, but I'm trying to think uh, of a way to uh, address your concern. Um, so you'd like to have it, so regardless of who owns the commercial space, the residential owner needs to maintain the commercial uh, property? Or just the kind of exterior uh, public, public space area?
No, just just the uh, community room that you're allowing the community to have, that would be professionally maintained by the.
We could uh, we could say that the uh, yes, and uh, we may uh, treat it that the community room I'm just trying to think, 'cause the community room is not, there's no residential there, um. But we can have it maintained, uh, sure, but I I think that we'd be okay with that. I'll just, it'll have to be a co- you know, a commercial condominium that goes with the uh, residential uh, development because the apartment building isn't above the community space.
Okay. And then I, the only o- other item, and then the impact fees, I think, has been resolved, right? He said the development agreement is based on when you pull the permit.
It is, but how do we make sure that we get an updated fee schedule long before that?
Mr. Allen will turn it around tomorrow for you.
Yeah, I I, yeah, I'll try, um.
We're not in a position to pull a permit for some period of time.
Let me, let me give in, I have a calendar for the upcoming council meetings and I'm I'm certain it's on here, so if you give me one second. But we did verify in the development agreement uh, that it is tied to the building permit issuance for existing fees. Um, there was a nuanced difference with for new fees that don't already exist that applied to the charges, which is different with there's no new fees that are being considered, we're just increasing the existing fees. So the developer impact fees scheduled to update currently is is in in March, so it's it's possible that that might get bumped depending on whether we're ready within the next month to take that to council, but that fee schedule will be updated in the next couple of months. Um, and we'll we'll slow Lionel down as much as we can.
Okay, and then the other issue I have flagged is um, a requirement for signage directing people and encouraging people to the free parking.
Uh, see, commercial condos, C C N Rs, do we have any control mechanism there?
I mean, we could add terms to the C C N Rs, what are you thinking about?
I don't know, I mean, we don't even know how many commercial condos that could be right now, right? Is the, are the um, condos broken up as they would be occupied? Or it's really, we're just approving eleven thousand plus or minus square feet of.
Yeah, it's really to separate the commercial space from the residential space. Uh, it does provide flexibility for transfer of the commercial space from the residential ownership, but also uh, within C C N Rs of a mixed-use project, which there will be, um, you know, there's different responsibilities for commercial establishments and for residential establishments. Uh, so that's the purpose of the commercial condominiums throughout the the project. Uh, right now, uh, we are required to have C C N Rs that have conditions in them that uh, the property has to be uh, maintained and the public area needs to be maintained, so those conditions are in there. Um, uh, you know, I don't know how else, um, you know, what else more we can do uh, other than to require that everything is maintained.
What is your concern, Michelle?
I mean, we have one really good actor right now, I don't know, you could have thirty mediocre actors ultimately.
Yeah, but I mean, we, if you look at the projects that are commercial condominiums, right, like over by um, the one oh five, what was that project, Eleon? Is that what it's called?
Elbon.
Elbon, something like that, yeah, those are all condos that are bought by accountants and whatnot, and they're their uh, area seems perfectly fine. I mean, we we have to trust someone who's gonna invest substantial sum to buy a commercial property on P C H is gonna maintain it.
Well, is there, is there a commercial association, like an HOA that says, you know, a third party's gonna maintain all the all the common space?
Yeah, the the condo would have a C C N R and just like an HOA would.
Yeah.
So they've they've.
That's correct, and and frankly, the incentive, the uh, residential property owner in the mixed use is gonna uh, really be motivated to make sure that the commercial condominium owner uh, maintains the property, and in the C C N Rs, there are rights, you know, to uh, take over the maintenance if they don't do it adequately and charge them back and that sort of thing. So there's gonna be a very large incentive uh, for the uh, residential property owner uh, to uh, make sure that that commercial space is maintained properly.
Fair enough.
Okay, well, then the only, the only thing I have on my list is the request that after completion of the project, it returns in six months and staff gives us a survey on traffic flow and parking. Um. But here's my question, once this goes to City Council and City Council approves it, six months go by, they come back to us, what authority do we have at that point? The project's been approved, they have their entitlement, it's built.
Just like an In-N-Out Burger, wasn't that supposed to happen as well as uh, parking, so the employees are down below in the parking in in that mall area as well as Chick-fil-A? Or wasn't?
Chick-fil-A, we told them, if there's one car on Maple, we're gonna take away your drive-through. Chick-fil-A, we told them if there's one car on Maple, we're gonna take away your drive-through.
We did say that.
We said that, and yet here we are.
I know.
Right?
I know.
But Chick-fil-A agreed to that, right? I, I, there's, there's no real, I don't know, stick's a bad word, but I guess the question is what, even after, well, I guess in, in six months, if there is a problem, then the burden is gonna fall upon the city to make it right for the residents.
Well, if I may, I, I think it also depends on how the, the condition is written. I mean, if, if you have a condition that says in six months, you know, you have a, a review and just leave it at that, you could, could, you could interpret it that way. But I think if, if you're gonna go down that path, perhaps adding some language that, you know, if at the six-month review additional impacts are, are, are identified, then perhaps the commission, you know, has the ability to um, at that time to, to uh, add, modify, or um, you know, some delete if, 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 if need be, some of the, the, the conditions to make, you know, those, those issues, to address those new issues or, or the issues that seem to have not been addressed.
There, there's also metrics that we can build into a condition that uh, provide measurable deliverables, and if they aren't met, then there is a financial contribution that has to, you either have to make the improvement or contribute X equivalent dollars to the city to, you know, that, that we have to now make the improvement. Uh, so there's, there's ways that we can structure the language. I, I won't be able to write it on the spot, but we can certainly cry, you know, we're, we're concerned with traffic and we're concerned with parking, so there's definitely metrics that can be used to quantify impacts, or I, I'll, I'll call them effects of the project, uh, because we're not talking about Sequo impacts, we're talking about residual, residual effects of, of the, the projects. Um, and we can quantify those and develop improvements that the developer could either be obligated to solve or create a method to identify a financial equivalent that they'd have to pay into the city fund to then solve for those, those impacts.
If I may, I would recommend that something to the effect that's being suggested would be proposed for inclusion in the DA, which already statutorily requires annual review, so we can provide for an early review and maybe build in those components that Michael was indicating.
And it's always the problem, however, that, that no amount of money can take away quality of life, you know, so it's really.
Well, the idea is that the funds are then used to try to put in some mitigation measures, signage, I don't know, widen streets.
Yeah. I, I also might suggest that we use the occupancy as opposed to six months. It's possible six months go by and only thirty percent of the building's occupied, which you're not gonna see any, any major, you know, impacts that, that, that you would otherwise see. So I, I would suggest using the eighty, ninety percent occupancy or, or something along those lines.
And how's the city gonna determine when that happens?
We'd have to, you know, that would be coordinated with the, with the developer.
Okay.
If, if I may, uh, suggest something as an alternative or complementary to uh, what you just uh, discussed. Uh, on, on large projects, development projects, commercial buildings and so forth, the city requires them to put together what we call transportation demand management programs. In other words, um, put systems in place that encourage people to use alternative transportation more and therefore reduce the actual parking demand and also the traffic coming in and out of the site. Perhaps we can look into that as, as another way to kind of reduce that, that impact that you're concerned about.
Okay, do you think there's, there's time for staff to work with the applicant between now and when he goes to council to try to hammer out some type of?
Oh, we have to.
Yeah.
I, this, it's currently not noticed for council, so we, we will, this will, you know, this will be the focus of our attention and, and we won't notice it and take it to council until these, these items are.
So that would be my, my question. Does this actually come back before planning commission?
I don't think it has to.
It doesn't need to?
We give my recommendations and, and they have an understanding of what we wanna present, then it can just go to, to council and, and we can show up and tell them what we think and take it from there.
So, so long as something is generally contemplated by the planning commission, broadly speaking, then um, as presented to the council, then that's sort of their, their leeway in, in considering and, and adopting something. If there's something that you all never thought of, which it seems like you're doing a pretty exhaustive review, um, in that case, it would have to come back, but that's rarely the, the situation.
Okay, Lionel, um, do you have any objections to this idea of just kinda checking in when things are occupied to see how everything's working and trying to make adjustments as needed?
No, uh, you know, we wanna be uh, good neighbors and we want to make things that work and, like you said, uh, you know, we have uh, several projects in the community and, and we continue to you know, enjoy working here, and we absolutely don't have any objections to that.
Okay, thank you. And, and again, to reiterate, I, I, I have a lot of respect for, for what your company has done and, and Mar, Mar Vista is, as far as transforming the city and helping us try to evolve and, and, and this project specifically is, is a great example of someone seeing a need and finding a way to fill that need of this type of housing in a location where I think may, might not be ideal, but it's probably the best spot we have for this type of thing. At the end of the day, we're, we're replacing a couple of parking lots in an abandoned building with something that's gonna be much more visually appealing. I, I think it'll blend in well with the hotels that are already there and be a, a much better improvement over what we're dealing with right now on PCH, so. Thank you and, and your team for all the efforts for putting this together, and, and thank you for the uh, community outreach. I, I did not attend any of it, but I was very much aware of your reaching out to Colonians and Rotarians and, and just trying to get feedback and uh, and make those changes so that the community felt like they had a voice. And that's, that's very important during this process, so thank you for that. Um, I think I went through all of the items. Staff, do, do you have the list I have?
Yes, uh, Chair.
You got it?
Yeah, you have uh, five specific items.
Okay.
The right turn only on Palm, the condition to do uh, the uh, circulation and parking analysis after six, well, after occupancy.
Right.
Uh, no, no gates to enter the site, uh, community room maintenance by the residential owner, and uh, wayfinding signs, signs directing people to parking. Those are the five conditions that you discussed.
Can I ask a late in the game?
Sure.
Question? We haven't talked about my favorite topic, which is affordable housing, which makes me happy, 'cause I feel like maybe now we're all on the same page where it's a good thing. Um, question though, who monitor, I'm assuming that's Many Mansions, is going to monitor those units? And who pays for the monitoring of those units?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Many Mansions will be, you know, as you know, has been contracted with the city and will be monitoring those units and they will be paid for by, by the applicant, by the developer, or the, whoever ends up owning the residential project.
Perfect.
Will have to pay their fees.
Thank you.
Alright, any other comments from the dais? Our Zoom friends, any comments?
Yeah, I just, I guess I'd like to say that uh, um, we all know Main Street, uh, not many people who drive through El Segundo know it, but they sure know PCH. And so I think this is a beautification project, even though it's denser. I love the idea of more retail on the street, more, more, more uh, programming and activation on the street of, on PCH. And I just think that makes our community stronger. I think that makes our, our community have more energy and uh, it's a, it's a good solution in that area, so I look forward to that.
Okay, can we, uh, well, I'll make a motion. Let me see, how am I gonna do this? It's not listed here. Alright, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2905, which is certification of the environmental impact report. Adopt Resolution 2905 to approve the general plan amendment GPA 1901 and the subdivision plan. Uh, adopt resolution recommending city council adopt an ordinance adopting the Pacific Coast Common specific plan and approving the zone change and zone text amendment and the development agreement. Adopt a resolution 2906 recommending city council approve the modifications conditional use permits for the ALOFT hotel and adopt a resolution 2907 recommending the city council approve modifications for the Fairfield Inn and Suites Hotel as modified by the council with those five conditions we previously discussed. I believe that covers it. Can I have a second?
I, I will second.
Thank you.
But I will not repeat what you said, no second.
You don't have to, that's the beauty of seconding. Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, Chair, Chair Bobino?
Aye.
Vice Chair Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Keldoff?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Hessler?
Aye.
And Commissioner Magai?
Aye.
Alright, thank you everyone, uh, for your patience with this and your thoughts and comments, it's appreciated. Next item on the agenda is new business. We have none, thankfully. That brings us to Agenda Item J, report from Director of Development Services.
Sure, um, good evening, heavy night. Thank you for getting us through that, Chair. Um, I just have a couple updates. Uh, one, speaking of Many Mansions, I just wanted to, to give the commission update that uh, in the next couple of months, Many Mansions will be coming back to the commission as we had previously discussed. Um, they are going to, they're, right now, they're tooling up to do a couple of community engagement um, workshops, and then they'll be coming back to the commission uh, to report out, get some additional feedback related to the city's affordable housing program. We'll probably try to time that with when we have to submit our annual housing update to the state, so we can talk about housing in general, uh, with, and that has to be done before April anyhow, so we'll, we'll try and time those so that we have a nice uh, topical meeting. Uh, and then Many Mansions will, will take that and, and present to city council after your feedback is provided. Um, the other couple of updates, and they're both housing related as well, is I just wanted to give you an update, the housing element um, did get through city council at its last meeting, um, and we have submitted that to HCD. Uh, and so we're waiting uh, on bend in knee, uh, to hear back from, from HCD. We're anticipating at least a third review, um, but it doesn't cause any problems with our certification or, or, or that, you know, we, we met the statutory requirements and so we're just, we're hearing that most cities, I think our consultant said, less than ten percent of the cities um, in our SCAG region are getting uh, them approved within the first or second cycle. Most are going third and fourth round, so we're anticipating that anyhow. Um, the other update was the SB nine ordinance that you made recommendations on. Uh, we brought that to council. Uh, council had a, a couple good, really additional, good pieces of feedback related to clarifying the height and floor area and uh, the rear, oh no, that was the commission.
Porches and patios.
Uh, porches and patios on the front, the fifty percent coverage. Uh, so we folded those into, to the, the lane, uh, the ordinance, and that'll be going back to city council next week for a reintroduction and then it'll be adopted thereafter. Uh, so those are my brief updates. I just wanted to keep you informed on where those things were at.
Appreciate that. Uh, next report from our city attorney's office?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Joaquin. And now, planning commissioner comments? I would like to uh, personally thank council member Lance Giroux. I had a conversation with him about Mr. Hessler being unceremoniously booted, and uh, he, I believe, was the spearhead behind the emergency meeting to temporarily, temporarily reappoint you until we can go through interviews. And speaking of which, do we have a timeframe on when we're gonna start collecting interviews for planning commission?
Uh, not off the top of my head. I did bring it up to uh, the city manager's office, um, Mesia is working on it, and Eduardo, do you have an update?
No, I, I spoke with her as well. I mean, it's, it's a big endeavor to try to get, you know, five different um, uh, uh, schedules so that, 'cause everyone wants to participate in, in those interviews. Um, so yeah, it, it's just a matter of trying to juggle, juggle that. Uh, you know, I will say though, that uh, you know, we'll be also looking at the other members of the commission, 'cause I think there might be one or two on the, uh, that, their terms are expiring, so we may have, we may just end up trying to fold everything into one. Um, but uh, yeah, that's all being handled by, by Mesia in the city manager's office.
Great. Alright, any other planning commissioner comments?
Nope.
Nothing? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Our next meeting, February twenty-fourth at five-thirty in council chambers.